From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Yes.
Okay. Board to reconvene. Madam Clerk, good morning and nice to see you after a little pause.
Good morning.
Would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Gleason.
Yeah.
Supervisor Scribner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggard.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Thank you. Supervisor Perez.
Here. Thank you so very much. Good morning to all of you. Welcome to the Tuesday, March 17, 2020, Meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We will begin today's meeting with a flag salute led by my favorite supervisor, Mick Gleason.
Mine too. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a free republic, which stands one nation under one principle, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Almost said amen. How funny. The County of Kern provided notice that as a result of the declared federal, state, and local emergencies due to the COVID-19 pandemic and in light of the Governor's order, the Board of Supervisors meeting is not physically open to the public today. Testimony and general public comment are accepted through email or voice message to the clerk of the board prior to today's meeting, and live comments via teleconference will be heard during the meeting. We will begin this morning by considering the consent agenda. All items listed with a capital C, capital A above the item are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion if a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item or items on the consent agenda. They may do so prior to a vote being taken on the consent agenda. A member of the board may remove an item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in its listed sequence, with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. A member of the public may also comment on any closed-session item. We'll begin by reading the consent agenda, which begins on page two. Items one through three are on consent. Item six is on consent with a correction. It should re-propose Amendment Number Two instead of Number One, and items seven and eight are on consent. On page three, items nine through sixteen. On page four, items eighteen through twenty-five. On page five, items twenty-six through twenty-eight and items thirty-two, thirty-two are on consent. Items twenty-nine and thirty-three have been withdrawn and will not be considered today. On page six, items thirty-four through thirty-eight. Did I complete the consent matters? Keep going. Did I do? Where did I stop, Kathy? Thirty-eight. So, we move to page seven. Okay. Sorry about that. On page seven, items forty through forty-seven. On page eight, items forty-eight through fifty-four. On page nine, items fifty-five and fifty-six, and items fifty-eight through sixty. Finally, on page ten, items sixty-one through sixty-seven. That completes the consent matters. Okay, fabulous. Are there any members of the board?
I'm sorry, can I?
Is that correct? Okay, thank you, Kathy. Are there any of my colleagues who would like to pull an item from consent? If so, now is the time to do that. Okay, this is PM. Okay.
And Madam Clerk, I can let you know that we did not have any members of the public requesting to address the board on any consent agenda items.
Okay, very good. So, now where do we go, Kathy?
It would be appropriate to receive a motion and second and then do a roll call vote.
In particular because we did not receive any public comment?
In particular because Supervisor Couch is attending the meeting remotely.
Okay, got it.
Pro movement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
Okay. Supervisor Gleason, we're doing a roll call vote. We have not done that in a while.
Aye.
Thank you. Supervisor Scribner.
Aye.
Supervisor Maggard.
Aye.
Supervisor Couch.
Aye.
Supervisor Perez.
Here, or aye.
Thank you. Motion carries all ayes.
Very good. Okay, consent is complete, Kathy, and we move to item number four, which is public presentations.
I do have some public presentations to read into the record. I also have some voicemails. If you'll give me just a moment, I want to pull up the public comments screen.
Okay, please do. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board on matters, not on the agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the board. So, Kathy?
Just a moment. Is it hot in here?
Yes.
Kathy, I'm going to step to the bathroom.
What I've done is I've pulled up the screen that shows the public comment that we've received, and I'm going to read the items that are in the blue category. We have four emailed comments on different topics, and so I will read the first one. This is public comment from Mary Sue. Dear Board Members, in this present COVID-19 crisis, domestic violence reports are up across the state and victims confront particular challenges leaving their abusers with a stay-at-home order. I am a survivor of domestic violence. I was fortunate to leave my abuser without being killed, but this was made possible due to a confidential address and name change provided by California law. Today, we work with numerous survivors helping them relocate. In recent months, we have had to move survivors as the City of Bakersfield released their addresses by posting all of the county's grant deeds on the city's website. The city has issued a statement denying numerous survivors' requests to remove their addresses and comply with California government code. In response, we support Kern County's efforts to establish and strengthen data-sharing agreements before cities or other public agencies are permitted to download county grant deeds. Victims of these terrible crimes need the county's help. Our families and children who are survivors of abuse depend on it. Thank you, Mary Sue, survivor and victim advocate.
Thank you, Kathy.
The next one.
That's one of the four public comments received.
That is correct.
Okay. Or public presentation.
The next public comment was submitted by Liz Keough, Honorable Chair Perez, Supervisors Gleason, Scribner, Maggard, and Couch, CAO Alsop. For the last few months, the respected website VolunteerMatch.org has been listing "district leader for the Humane Society of the United States," HSUS, a private nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization, as a volunteer opportunity in Bakersfield. The listing has stated that the contact address is 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, 93301, which, as you know, is the address for the County Administrative Building. By providing that address as the point of contact, the HSUS was clearly implying that it was either an official or semi-official county agency, or at a minimum, a nonprofit organization that had received approval from the county to use the admin building's address as its contact address. I found this information puzzling and contacted the CAO's office in early March to inquire if the CAO had any knowledge of this. Excuse me. I was told Mr. Alsop did not, but understandably had no control over the information provided on other websites. Ms. Megan Person, your chief communications officer, suggested that I contact Volunteer Match directly, in addition to her contact with them. As a result of our communications, the bi-weekly email I received today does not show any street address as a point of contact for HSUS. While the immediate issue of the use of the address by an ethically-challenged private organization has been resolved, the bigger issue remains, and that is the use of your address as a contact point for any organization that is not a division of county government. The purpose of this correspondence is to request that by resolution, a press release from the CAO's office and/or any other action you deem appropriate. The public is advised that the use of the County Administrative Building's address at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, 93301, as a contact point or location for non-county government organizations is prohibited. Thank you for your attention to this relatively minor matter in the grand scheme of things, but one that I believe merits your review, comment, and action. Cordially, Liz Keough, proud resident of the 5th District.
Will the CAO or any staff be commenting on any of the public items?
I would say it would be appropriate at the end of public comments to ask for staff to comment if you wish.
But we'll wait till all comments are read.
I think so, yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
The next email is from Deana Sturgeon. It is regarding mandatory face mask policy on Kern County and pending test results. Hello, how do I get this request to the Board of Supervisors? I am very concerned about our Tehachapi area, as well as all of Kern County. I am writing to ask if you could consider helping to make wearing of face masks required by all residents in Tehachapi and Kern County to be worn when out in public. Being at risk myself and all the elderly that have to go out for essential services, it would sure give... It sure would be give a little more comfort and some peace of mind in this trying time. I realize our mountain area hasn't been hit too hard yet, but it would be nice to continue to protect us all. With the increasing numbers in Bakersfield, where many of the Tehachapi residents have to travel to and from, the extra protection would save lives. With our prison, we also have many workers traveling through Tehachapi to prison from outside our area that stop and shop in our stores that transmission can easily be spread. Please, please, I plead with Kern County to make face masks a mandatory requirement when out in public to protect all of us. Also, is there anything you can do to help with expediting pending test results? Is it true that Kern County is 40% of all the pending results in the whole state of California, taking as much as 14 days to get results back? In that time, it can expect our numbers to continue to increase. Thank you. Last comment.
Thank you, Kathy.
I also wanted to let you know that Ms. Deana Sturgeon also left a voice message, but it's the same. I listened to it. I also provided it to board members. It's the same message as the written message, therefore, I didn't feel it was necessary to repeat. The last message under public comment is from Jasmine Del Agila, Leadership Counsel for Justice and Accountability. Good afternoon. My name is Jasmine Del Agila with Leadership Counsel for Justice and Accountability. I wish to submit the following written comments and attached letter to the Board of Supervisors for the 4/21/2020 morning session under public presentations. Residents in the 5th District are aware of the county's interest in selling the properties on 999 East California Avenue, Bakersfield, California 93307, 1016 South Owen Street, Bakersfield, California 93307, and 425 East Fairview Road, Bakersfield, California 93307. Today, they have come together through this letter to ask the board to not pursue the sale of these properties without first consulting with the community they serve. These locations uniquely serve their communities and contribute great value to our community at large. Privatizing them will limit the community's accessibility to communal space in their neighborhoods, which already lack many other amenities and resources. We ask the board not to pursue any further intentions to sell these properties. Thank you. And the letter attached was provided to all board members.
Kathy, thank you. I do want to comment. I'm going to go through each item specifically and see if there's any contributions from staff or the board, but also, will we be taking live public comments?
I'm going to check and see if we have any. So, go ahead and start your questions, and I'll check.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Alsop, good morning. Nice to see you. I know you've been incredibly busy with the happenings of the last few weeks, and I appreciate your devotion, attention. You are always available and working round the clock, which I appreciate. So, Ryan, you've heard some of the public comment. If you could, if we could begin with the first one, an item regarding domestic violence reports. There's been all kinds of information about this on the Internet. I'm not sure how much of this is within our purview, but certainly, if you have comments on it. If not, if there are other members of staff or the County of Kern that would like to comment, certainly, I want to respond to these very important interests.
Yeah, on that one, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, I'm not sure that I have a comment, other than to say that's, you know, a despicable negative externality of the times that we're in, and just highlights the reason why we do the business that we do, taking care of those folks. I'm not sure if there's anybody here from... Is there anybody here from?
Mr. Lifquist, I understand that you are...
Margot has something.
And Margot as well. Okay, so if we could hear from Margot, rise on, and then, Mr. Lifquist, if you can make your way down. I understand you have some information to share, and I so appreciate it. Margot, good to see you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just in relation to the public comment about the domestic violence and the posting of county grant deeds on the city's website, my office has been working with the city and others trying to rectify that situation. So, hopefully, going forward, that will be fixed. But we are aware of this and working on it.
And recognize it as a problem.
Correct.
I appreciate you so much. Mr. Lifquist? Nice to see you. Safe and sound. Welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. So, the issue is that apparently the City of Bakersfield posted some documents. This really has not much to do with the Recorder's Office. We're recorded by law to record a document if it meets legal requirements. Once that document is recorded, there are certain things that we can't post, but it is a public record. When it's transmitted to other departments, anywhere else, the county, we have no say as to what's going to happen with that document.
Colleagues, do you have any questions of Mr. Lifquist? Supervisor Maggard.
Thank you. Mr. Lifquist, is it accurate that once it's been posted with you, it is then available to the public to go obtain a copy of?
That's correct.
So...
And I will say that County Council has recommended that this person sue the Recorder's Office to... Office to have the, the document masked or redacted. I said, "Thank you."
[laughing]
Because we can't do it, once it's been recorded, it's public record, but the courts can do it, so I think that might be the ultimate solution to this problem.
Is it possible for us to take the opposite tact and establish a policy that calls for records in this circumstance to be set aside and not made available to the public, and then compel a member of the public to sue the county or take some formal action in order to obtain it? Just so we can provide a check for that person?
I would leave that to County Council. Any solution is going to have to meet the requirements of the Public Records Act.
Madam Counsel?
Supervisor Maggard, through the chair. Right now, the law is such that we are under an obligation to, to post certain, or to file certain documents. We will certainly look into that and see if we could do a, as you suggest, a reverse where we don't post, and then have somebody who's interested in that proactively seek that. I'm not, I'm not sure, but we will look into that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lifquist.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Maggard. Supervisor Gleason?
Mr. Lifquist, while we get you up here?
Excuse me.
On a different topic. Could you talk about the newspaper articles recently about the price of oil and its implications? And just give us some broad-brush comments about what you were looking at, looking in your crystal ball?
Well, no crystal ball, but obviously, oil is, is suffering right now. The first comment I make whenever I'm, I'm asked by the media or anyone is to remember that January 1st is statutorily the, the date, Midnight January 1st is the date that we value all property, so January 1st is past, what's happening today is not going to affect our assessment, the assessment role that we come up with July 1st, or, or a month later if, if we ask for a, if we get a continuance. That said, obviously, there is a, there's been a huge drop in, in oil recently. That was, yesterday, we saw WTI selling for, or valued in, in negative, negative numbers. We dropped WTI as a benchmark for, for California crude years ago because of the volatility in, volatility in that market. Cushing, Oklahoma is a distribution bottleneck, and so the, the prices can, can fluctuate wildly. We don't use WTI as a benchmark, but on the other hand, yesterday, Midway Sunset was valued at $16, is it $14 today? The, in the last five years where we've seen the, the oil price affect the, the county coffers so dramatically, the lowest value we've had is $35 a barrel, and the, for the last five years, we've been over $50 a barrel, so needless to say, if this continues, if, if we see this January 1st, $14 and, and $16, $15 a barrel, it will affect, it will affect our, our role dramatically.
Is it fair to say, as a layperson with the oil markets, is that the spot market for May oil is one thing, but that's not necessarily what we buil, build our budget on? We ha, we build our budget on the January, December market, future market for oil, so there are a lot can happen between now and then, and it's not cause for panic yet, it's cause for concern and, you know, keep our eye on the ball, but that is down the road. And it, it's not going to have any immediate impact for Kern County in terms of our property taxes.
That's correct, no immediate impact, and it, it won't affect the, the role of being prepared. On the other hand, it is cause for concern. One of the things that we saw in the, in the, in the depressed oil market was an excess in, in inventory, and that's what's happening in Cushing, Oklahoma right now, is they, they can't get rid of the oil.
So our concern, our prayers go to the oil industry and our whole community, that this issue becomes resolved, for a lot of reasons, economic and business reasons, but in terms of the Kern County budget, the impact is not yet felt.
That's correct, Supervisor.
Thank you, John.
Thank you for the clarification, Supervisor. Incredibly helpful, and of course, Mr. Lifquist, anything else you'd like to add?
No, but oil is obviously not our, our, our only concern right now. We're seeing huge economic impacts of this shutdown, so again, the coming role might not reflect that, but-
Sure.
We need to be prudent looking into the future.
No doubt. Thank you, Mr. Lifquist. Appreciate you. Okay, moving on then to the second public comment, Kathy. The item is regarding the website VolunteerMatch. I understand we have a quick answer for that, or a succinct solution. Mr. Alsop, the floor is yours.
Madam Chairwoman, it was a, it was a simple error that was made, an autofill error, and it was corrected when we contacted the appropriate parties.
Well, that's record speed, thank you. Any comments from the public or my colleagues on that matter? Okay, we're going to move right along to the next public comment, which was regarding the Tehachapi area. I'm sure you remember Supervisor Scrivener, so I'll just open the floor for you if you want to comment on that particular item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm happy to, actually, what I would like to do is ask Matt Constantine, our Director of Public Health, if he could come forward and just address specifically two questions, I think that are, that were posed here. One is the question of mandating face masks in public throughout the county, and the second was a comment about the testing, and I think that what was said in the, in the comment was that Kern County is, counts for 40% of the pending test statewide, which I'd be surprised if that was the, was actually the case, if you could comment on that. And then, if you could, I, we have heard concerns from, from folks from time to time about the availability of, of testing throughout the county, different areas, et cetera, so if you could just give us some, some good guidance and best practice on who should be tested and, and when that should occur, I'd appreciate it. Thanks, Matt. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Supervisor Scrivener, through the chair. The first question on face masks or face coverings, the CDC recommendations, as they stand today, indicate that face coverings are recommended for the general public if you may, if you cannot achieve a six-foot social distance. So, in the case that you can't achieve that, perhaps in a store or some other environment, then face coverings are recommended. Other counties, I think a couple other counties have mandated countywide the use of face coverings. We have not done that locally, as we've been following CDC guidance. As far as testing, see if I can do this in order, the first question was on the prevalence of testing, I'm not sure if that was the last one.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Clerk, but when I was listening to you, it had to do with, I think that this person had heard that, oh, here we go, it's, is it true that Kern County is, is 40% of all the pending results in the whole state of California, taking as much as 14 days to get results back?
Gotcha. So the answer to that is, we have been very transparent on the number of tests that are done in Kern County. Other counties don't provide that information, we've been providing that from the beginning. There are a number of pending tests that are still within our system, and as you will recall, any doctor that suspects that there's a person that has, potentially has COVID-19, that they test, they're required by law to tell us about that suspect case and that they're testing. The labs and the doctor are required then to provide us if there's a positive result. There is no mandate that either the lab or the treating physician provides negative results to us. We do have, however, use our epidemiologists and our nurses to go after every one of those tests to determine if they were truly negative, so that we have a good count. We've also recognized that at times, the lab, they do provide information to us on some negative results, but they're incomplete. They don't have a full address or a full name, so it takes time for us to actually reconcile those numbers. I cannot respond to the comment about, "We represent 40% of the state." I would find that very difficult to believe. I can only report to you the numbers that we have.
So do you think that some of it has to do, perhaps, with the fact that we are reporting how many tests and how many negatives, et cetera, and then how many pending versus other counties that may not be reporting? How many are pending, and then you could extrapolate from that, that, okay, we have a lot of pending compared to others?
That would be my assumption, yes, sir.
Okay, okay, thank you. What about the 14-day turnaround? I know that in the beginning of all this, it seemed that it was taking a while to get through, I think there was some reports in the media about one specific lab that there was a turnaround, but I think that might have been the only one that was up and, and running at the time. Now, I believe test results have dramatically decreased, as far as the timeline.
Yes, sir. So initially, CDC was the only entity testing, and there were research laboratories, so they were not in a position to turn around data that quickly. Eventually, the state and CDC authorized local, private labs to begin testing. Initially, their turnaround time was extended. We check in with every single testing agency in the county on a daily basis and ask them the number they're testing, if they need any supplies, and what their average turnaround time is, and it varies from as quick as 12 hours to as long as 72 hours on a daily basis. So the results are coming back fairly quickly. There have been times when it's been delayed for other reasons, laboratory is inundated, or there's been mistakes made, but generally speaking, it's a couple days.
Okay, and lastly, for, for folks that live in some of the outlying areas of the county, say, you know, say you live in Boron, or you live in the Kern River Valley, and you, you don't have maybe access to all the, all the different resources that you would in, in a metro area. For folks out there that are concerned that there aren't any testing sites nearby, what, what can you say to them?
So any doctor has the ability to test for COVID-19. It is not an unusual test to be done, they take a sample and they send it to a contracted lab, so any of your doctors should be able to do that. We do have sites that have established a, kind of a drive-through or a clinic setting where they can come up quickly just for that service. You had asked me earlier this week to, to evaluate the capabilities in, in eastern Kern, and as you know, Ridgecrest does do that, but there is an absence of testing, kind of walk-in clinic-style testing. This morning, we made contact with a few of the clinics in those areas, asking what they do and if there would be interest in expanding testing in those areas. We don't have an answer yet, but we started those discussions. We have the ability to request testing supplies from the state, if that's an impediment, so we're in those discussions now.
Okay, and I appreciate you following up on that.
Yes, sir.
But who, who right now, in your opinion, should be tested, and, and what, what is the mechanism, or the catalyst, rather, for them to, to be tested? Is it, you know, if I feel that I'm symptomatic, do I go try to find a place to be tested? Or should I be going to my physician, being evaluated, and then having my physician determine whether or not a test is appropriate?
So the latter is best. If you feel you're symptomatic, you should see, seek care from your physician and let them make those decisions. In general, the CDC and the CDPH has come out with five categories of individuals that should be tested, and it's those that work in healthcare or work in a skilled nursing facility that are symptomatic and work in those sensitive occupations. For most of us that are otherwise healthy and don't have underlying health conditions, they are not recommending testing for us. That not only preserves those test, testing capabilities for others, but since there is no treatment specific to COVID-19 or cure, and from an epidemiological standpoint, that additional information is not actually that helpful, they're discouraging testing for, for those that are otherwise healthy.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Gleason, and then Supervisor Maggard.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Supervisor Maggard, did I cut in front of you?
No, you're first.
Okay. Real quick, talk to me about antibody testing.
So I'm going to defer to Kim Hernandez, if you wouldn't mind. She's going to be able to provide you more up-to-date, specific information.
Thank you.
Shocking. Good morning, Supervisor, I'm sorry, Supervisor Gleason, through the chair. Antibody testing is still being evaluated throughout the nation. We know that there are a number of places who have advertised that they are performing antibody testing. We would warn everyone in our community to be judicious and to check on the claims that are being put out there. There are only just a few antibody tests that have been authorized by the FDA under the emergency use authorization. That can be found on their website as tests that have been at least reviewed by the FDA. There are a number of them out there, when you dig into them, that explicitly say they have not been reviewed by the FDA, that they, that this test for the novel coronavirus antibody may cross-react with other human coronaviruses and may not give you the information that you're looking for. So we do know that there are some valid tests out there. We are not aware that any of them are currently being offered in Kern County. We have checked with the manufacturers of the tests to try to find out if they have sent any of those test kits to Kern County or to California. So far, the ones we've received responses from have said no, so we want people to be very cautious when they seek out antibody testing, that it will give them the answer that they are looking for, and we want to make sure that, particularly because a lot of these companies have been targeting employers as a mechanism to get employees back to work, that our employers are doing their due diligence and making sure they understand what this information actually provides to them.
So, what I heard you say is that the antibody testing is not, not FDA-approved, it's unreliable. It may be here, it may not be here, we don't know about it, but you're urging caution with taking those tests, anyone taking, because you don't know, they're unpredictable, they're unreliable. The results may not be what you really have. And then, my next question is, when will we have antibody testing?
That's everybody's question. We don't know how soon. We know that CDC is actively working on it, we know that a number of other test manufacturers are actively working on it. We're waiting, continuing to wait for guidance from CDC and the California Department of Public Health, that gives us a good indication of when they are confident that the interpretation of these antibody test results are useful, and, you know, exactly where, where we think it will take us, but nobody has an exact timeline. It's something where they're trying to be very cautious about encouraging it before we know the true interpretation of the results. Thank you, sir.
Supervisor Gleason? Supervisor Maggard?
Thank you. Mr. Derek Constantine? With regard to this backlog of testing, about how many people do you think are being tested per day in Kern County?
Kim, can you assist? We're going to struggle providing a-
I couldn't give you an exact number, it's a lot.
So again, we check in with every clinic and drive-up testing site on a daily basis, and we do receive reports of suspected cases on a daily basis from our providers, both in the hospital and private, but I don't have a number on my fingertips, sir.
So if, if there are 3,000 pending tests, and it takes about 72 hours maximum in order to get your results, is it reasonable to assume that about, if there's a three-day backlog in there, that that's about 1,000 people a day are getting tested? Could it be that high?
I would have to check, sir, I, I don't know.
Because I, I think the news doesn't want to report incorrect information over and over and over again, so I would urge you to contact, I think it's KGET-
Okay.
-that put out the 48, and last night again, 49% of the state's total pending cases are in Kern County. If that's not a correct number, we should tell them.
Yes, sir.
So that it's not, they know it's not a correct number, then it's on them as to whether or not they, they repeat it, but I don't think they want to repeat inaccurate information, so I would urge you to have a conversation with them and explain the, the inconsistencies. You and I had a conversation about this earlier this week, and as I recollect, without mentioning which community it is, because I don't want to put them in an awkward spot, but you, you had one community, a very large county, that was asking you directly, as I understood it, where do you get these unresolved pending cases from? They didn't even know how to report the number, right?
Correct, so I, as, as you've requested, we will make contact and try to address those issues, yes, sir.
So I just think it's clear that the, the total number of, of, of pending cases in the state is wrong, and therefore, using, making a straight fraction out of that, a ratio out of that is, is inappropriate, so thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Maggard, for those clarifying questions. Anybody else? Supervisor Scrivener?
I'm sorry, excuse me, Madam Clerk, I was getting ready to do Board Member Announcements or Reports, is that where we are? Or I, did I jump the gun?
Well, Supervisor Scrivener- Well, Supervisor Scrivner, I'm the chair, so when we get there, I will alert you, I assure you.
Thanks so much.
Madam Clerk, you had something to add?
I was just mentioning that there was one more public comment.
Oh, there is. Thank you very much. And then, if you could write a little note to Zach as to who the chair is today, sir. I'm just kidding, Zach is a great partner and friend. Okay, the last comment that we will hopefully have some good response to. In fact, I'm aware that my staff has been working on this item, and that we can hear from Jeff Hill. Thank you very much. So the public comment from Jasmine de Aguila, I think, I don't mean to mispronounce anybody's name ever, so my apologies, but from Justice, the Council for Justice and Accountability. I understand they've been following this matter for some time. We've had multiple discussions on it. If you could come down, Jeff, we'd so appreciate your expertise and insight. It's good to see you, and I'm glad you're healthy and safe.
Madam Chair, members of the board, yeah, we're very glad that we're healthy and safe as well. This letter, I think, references two pieces of property that the county is pursuing to get, to sell. They're both very, they were very underutilized properties. One is at Martin Luther King Jr. Park. That's a park that we gave away to the city of Bakersfield years ago, but kept this piece of property. It is very underutilized. It was, it was a vets' building.
I remember.
But we worked with Josh, with Veteran Services. There's been, not been an active veterans' presence there for a very long time, and he deemed that it was no longer viable as a veterans' facility. That allowed us to start the pursuit of disposing of the, determining the properties surplus and disposing of it. We properly noticed this property, as well as the Rexland Acres Building, and we think that it will yield good revenues to the county and good use of that land for a developer.
Jeff, I know we had this item come before. There was a hope that you would get together with these folks and that you guys could find some middle ground, or at least comprehend each other's positions. Has that happened? Where are we? Do we need to do more of that? This seems to me like an issue we should be able to resolve informally.
We were, there was a Public Records Request Act that came for all documents and related to both of these properties, and we've responded to those. At this point, we haven't come together to talk about what they want and what we want.
Okay. I would like to be part of that, Jeff, that conversation, because it seems to me like there's just some miscommunication. No fault of anyone's is my presumption going into it. So let's, I'd like to help resolve this and try to get on the same page, and your arguments are sound to me. I'd like to hear their arguments as well, and then try to find out how we move forward.
Great.
Put this, you know, just keep moving. Okay? Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay. Kathy, is there any live public comment that we should consider at this time?
No, there is not.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to move right along to item number five, which is board member announcements or reports. I understand Supervisor Maggard has something for announcements, and then Supervisor Scrivner as well. So Supervisor Maggard.
I'm happy to defer to Supervisor Scrivner, if you wanted to go first.
You're first, Supervisor Maggard, as usual.
Madam Chair, I am happy to go first.
Good.
I have a referral to make this morning, and I'm going to read just a little bit about it, because it's a little bit involved. So, "The coronavirus pandemic we are currently enduring is not only destroying the very lives of our loved ones and our countrymen, but it's also on the verge of destroying our economy and our way of life. While we must not jeopardize the health and lives of those we represent, we must be prepared when the time is right to reopen our economy and stem the destruction of our economy and our way of life. I'm not suggesting that we proceed with reopening our economy before science and our experts tell us it is appropriate to do so. However, I submit that we must prepare now for how we will begin to reignite our economy, so that once we receive the all-clear sign with the next breath, we can jumpstart, move to jumpstart our economy and proceed with trying to reinvigorate all the jobs and employment that goes along with it. So I am calling today for the formation of a COVID-19 task force made up of business and community leaders with help from public health at the direction of an appointment by this board of supervisors. The entire board would be involved in, I'm suggesting, in appointing these representatives from the business and community leader groups. I submit that we, one, appoint Supervisor Scrivner and myself, as we are the designees of this board, to the Kern Economic Development Corporation, as the board representatives on the task force, that we appoint regional representation throughout the county. That means all sectors of the county would participate in this task force, so that it is not Bakersfield-centric, who would represent community and business leaders from each of our economic sectors, to include but not be limited to such sectors as auto dealers, restaurateurs, hotels, retail, real estate, ag and food processing, hospitals, medical providers, professional services, oil and gas, and other renewable energy industries. And anything else we can think of? That's just a partial list there. I also think that we should invite our colleagues from the city of Bakersfield and from other municipalities to participate in the effort, so that this, when we do get the green light and we can take steps to reignite, we see it happen throughout the county. My third request in this referral is that we would, this task force would join with public health and other key county staff to review and interpret the governor's order and the president's list of essential businesses, to provide recommendations to the county regarding businesses or portions of businesses that are allowed to remain open during this time. I think we should look at that as robustly as is justified by the science that's out there. Fourth, this task force would review and interpret the governor's order regarding social, religious, and sporting events and other types of gatherings to provide specific recommendations to the county as to how we can apply these orders locally. We've already done this with golf courses. We've done it with an industry like funeral homes, and I'm sure we're about to be asked to do it with graduation ceremonies. So I think it would be good to get, again, following the guidelines that are established by science and the best minds on this, but still, how do we reasonably implement those orders within Kern County? The task force would meet with impacted industries and organizations regarding recommendations for best practices, and when the governor amends the stay-at-home order, that this task force would provide guidance and recommendations to the county on implementing the necessary changes locally. In other words, reopening our local economy, and thus enabling the private sector and all the jobs that go along with it to once again flourish as restrictions are lessened. So essentially, my recommendation, my referral to the board is for us, at our next opportunity, to consider the formation of a task force like this, so that we can engage all the sectors of our economy and how we go about when the time is right, starting to move back into a full-fledged economic, you know, effort like we have been before. So that is my referral.
Supervisor Maggard, thank you for your leadership on that matter. Supervisor Scrivner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, Supervisor Maggard, thank you for that thoughtful referral, and as I'm sitting here listening to you, I had to say, you know, I was thinking the very same thing. I was talking to Mr. Constantine about this on Saturday, Mr. Alsop yesterday also. I was speaking to Margot about this as well, Ms. Raisan, excuse me, our county council, about this on Saturday as well, to do just that, to be ready, to be poised, and ready to go. And another thing I think that this task force could do, if we're able to get it up and running, is to help give some input and guidance to Mr. Constantine, as he is currently, right now, evaluating whether businesses are essential, whether or not they can and should be open, because you may have businesses that are not on a specific list, coming out of DC or Sacramento, but because in the way in which they put best practices in place, and are doing things like ensuring that you don't have, you don't have groups of people together, you're able to maintain social distancing, you're not touching common surfaces. If you are operating in a safe manner, why can't one business be able to do it and another one can, if they're both able to meet all of those different benchmarks to keep the employees and the public safe? And so I think that that task force, in addition to having us be ready and poised to get going again, once the governor lifts his orders, we can also, I think, help to evaluate some of our businesses currently and see if they would be able to operate. And so, Mr. Constantine, would you like to make any comment about that, and kind of how you would like to maybe see this work, so you can get a little bit of input?
Supervisor Scrivner and Supervisor Maggard, through the chair, thank you both. This would help for those two fronts. The current issue is trying to interpret the 14 pages from the governor about what industries, how they're affected by this, and this isn't just a list. These are businesses in our community that live and die by this interpretation. This impacts them specifically. And the governor's list is specific in some places, but not in others, and to try to interpret it and to provide consistent approach to different businesses is very time-consuming, but very important, and I appreciate that there would be others involved in providing that oversight. We've talked a little bit about furniture stores, those are tough ones, funeral homes, as Supervisor Maggard answered. There are some functions in society that has to continue, so we need to put some common sense to it. I would ask that the sooner the better. These are, in fact, even this morning, these are daily issues that we're dealing with, that we're trying to interpret, and it would be very helpful to us to have that involvement from a task force.
I thank you, because I think the easy thing for you to do would say, if you're not on the list, you're not on the list, and you're closed, but that's not how we want to operate. We want to, we want to enable any business to stay open that can do so safely.
Yes, sir.
That should be our objective.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So I will second that motion for the referral. Thank you Supervisor Maggard.
Great. We have a referral by Supervisor Maggard and a second by Supervisor Scrivner. I love the idea. I think you two are the right choices. Supervisor, would you like to add?
Good job, Mike.
Excellent. Great leadership. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we're going to do a roll call.
Yes, roll call vote. Supervisor Gleason.
Yes.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Aye.
Supervisor Maggard.
Aye.
Supervisor Couch.
Aye.
Supervisor Perez.
Here. Aye, my gosh. My goodness.
Motion carries, all ayes.
I'm a little rusty. My gosh, I'm sorry. Corona's got us upside down. Okay, so Supervisor Scrivner, you had a separate issue.
I do, thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, or, excuse me, Madam Chair, and Madam Clerk.
Who's on first?
We're all doing great today, thank you. All right. As everyone knows, about nine months ago, our board voted unanimously to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Tahoma Indian Tribe regarding the establishment of a tribal homeland for gaming and other purposes. And so, that's been a long nine months, and as everyone knows, our economy has been hit hard with the downturn in the oil economy, and also from the attacks from Sacramento on our oil industry, and now we have the COVID-19 situation, which is further depressing our economy. So anywhere we can find a bright light at the end of the tunnel here, I think we need to go after it, and I think that in the form of economic development, we have such an opportunity with the Tahoma Indian Tribe and the casino and hotel that Hard Rock is proposing to develop there. And so, I'd like for us to send a letter to the Secretary Bernhardt of the Department of the Interior, signed by all five supervisors. We'd like to circulate that letter just as soon as possible, asking them to immediately issue the department's draft environmental impact statement, or DIS, concerning the Tahoma Indian Tribe application for their proposed 306-acre fee-to-trust transfer and gaming facility project in the unincorporated area of Kern County, also located in District 2. So, Madam Chair, that is my, that is my motion to send that letter. Thank you.
I'll second that motion. Good job, Zach.
A little bit of gambling will help us all in these tough times, I suspect. I'm joking. Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Roll call vote. Supervisor Gleason.
Aye.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Aye.
Supervisor Maggard.
Aye.
Supervisor Couch.
Aye.
Supervisor Perez.
Aye. Thank you. Threes a charm.
All ayes.
Okay, very good. Moving on, do we have Supervisor Gleason, any comments? Okay, Supervisor Couch, anything from you? Excuse me, Supervisor Couch, any comments from you?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move right along, then, to item number 17. Under Auditor Controller, County Clerk Ms. Bedard, a proposed resolution recommending governor issued an executive order regarding the November 3, 2020, general election to authorize counties to conduct an all-mail ballot election. Ms. Bedard, it's nice to see you. It's nice to see you safe and sound. Welcome, and we're eager to hear from you and your expertise.
Good morning Chairman Perez and members of the board. The item before you today is a resolution urging the governor to issue an executive order authorizing the ballots be mailed to every voter in the November election, but giving the counties the flexibility to determine how they will handle in-person voting, depending on the public health situation at that time. While it may seem like the November election is still a long way off, in reality, we need to begin finalizing a lot of the preparations now. So we need clarity and direction from the state about how we are to conduct the election. With so many of our volunteer poll workers being retirees, it will be difficult to recruit the number of poll workers we would need for the hundreds of poll sites we normally have, and we don't know yet if a significant amount of in-person voting will even be safe for voters or election workers. Under this proposed executive order, ballots would be mailed to all registered voters to ensure that no one, particularly the elderly and others especially susceptible to COVID-19, are disenfranchised, while still making in-person voting options available to voters. The proposals currently being considered by the state all involve mailing ballots to all voters. The differences among the options are basically a question of what other mandates and requirements will be placed on counties. Having certain requirements dictated to counties when no one knows what the public health situation will be in the fall could be dangerous to voters and election workers. Several outside advocacy groups have made a proposal to the governor to force all counties to go to vote centers, although they have suggested reducing some of the requirements under the Voters' Choice Act. Their goal still seems to be to encourage in-person voting, which is exactly the wrong approach under the current emergency situation. We need to encourage voting, but the emphasis should be allowing people to vote by mail while still making sure in-person voting is available and accessible for voters who need that. We had previously determined that the requirements of the Voters' Choice Act would not work in a county the size of Kern. Forty-two other counties also determined that the Voters' Choice Act was not suitable for them. If it wasn't going to work for us under normal conditions, it's not going to work under the current emergency. Another proposal that has been made to the governor is to make changes to voter registration timelines and vote-by-mail processes, but these have never been tested and could create problems of their own for election workers and voters. The executive order we are proposing is substantially the same as the ones that Governor Newsom has already issued regarding special elections being held this spring, and gives the counties the flexibility to determine how to handle in-person voting under the current public health emergency. In Kern, 72% of the ballots cast in March were mail ballots. We had over 600 precincts, but several hundred of those were what are called mail ballot precincts. What that means is that all voters in those precincts are mailed a ballot, whether they request it or not. There is no precinct polling site. These are set up this way because voters in those precincts do not live in close enough proximity to each other to make a precinct poll place feasible. So this concept is not new in Kern. Some voters may have questions about vote-by-mail. In 2019, my office began work on a video to answer voters' questions regarding the election process. The vote-by-mail portion of that video is nearly completed. This video not only answers questions, but also demonstrates the process and security measures we take. We hope to put that video out on our website in the next few weeks to help dispel some of the myths and misinformation that have been circulated regarding vote-by-mail. Since we compare the signature on the return envelope with the signature on file and confirm that they match before counting the ballot, vote-by-mail is an extremely secure method of voting. As a practical matter, our existing sorting and tabulating equipment can handle the increase in vote-by-mail. There would be additional costs for postage, printing, and signature verification, but some of these costs could be offset by reduction in poll site costs, including poll worker recruitment, training, and stipends. The way we anticipate implementing in-person voting in Kern under this proposal would be to set up satellite elections offices in outlying cities, maybe using library branches or other county buildings, to handle any in-person voting needs. We do not anticipate being able to have individual precinct polling sites under the current We do not anticipate being able to have individual precinct polling sites under the current emergency. The satellite elections offices would ensure in-person voting is available to voters wherever they live in the county, but the option of voting by mail would be available to all voters as well. So voters who do not feel safe voting in person would still be able to exercise their right to vote. Since counties are the ones paying for and administering the election, it is extremely important that our voices are heard. Monterey and Contra Costa Counties approved similar resolutions last week. Several other counties are considering the resolution this week. Therefore, I request that your board approve this resolution to urge the governor to authorize an all-mail ballot election in November, but allow counties the flexibility to determine how to handle in-person voting, depending on the public health situation at that time, thereby increasing voter accessibility while protecting the health of voters and election workers. That concludes my remarks.
Ms. Bedard, thank you for your succinct report. It's the governor's decision and not the Secretary of State.
It would be, well, at this point, it's probably, the governor has already issued executive orders. There is some legislation that was proposed late last week, so potentially the legislature could act on it, but so far, it's been executive orders from the governor regarding the special elections.
That's helpful. Thank you very much. We do have some public comments, eight emails actually, and three voicemail messages that we're going to sit through and listen to carefully and consider. Ms. Bedard, if you could have a seat in the front row, we will be calling on you, I presume. And so before we go to my colleagues or have in-depth discussion, I do want to take public comment and input at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to take these in the order in which they were received, so we will hear a couple emails, and then we're going to hear some public comment through the voicemail as well. So the first email we received was from Jeanne Kimball. "I have been on the vote-by-mail option for years. It works well, and I cannot now drive. It is easy, convenient, and I believe now necessary. Oregon has been using vote-by-mail for all voters for years, and they have had great success with it. It is time for California to also go this route." Eugene William Kimball.
Do we have identification of what district she lives in?
I think it's 93304. There is no address.
Okay.
This next comment is actually a voice message from Linda Jimenez. All right, why is it not playing? Okay, I'm going to read all the emails, and then maybe I'll get some technical help to make sure that the voicemails can be heard. So let's move on to the next email. And this is from Jody Kohler. "I'm writing concerning item number 17 in the AM meeting for April 21st. Mail-in ballots are the way governments control the outcome of voting. I cannot believe Kern County is going to go along with this in a national election. We have only lost three people in this contrived pandemic. We cannot say we won't be all over this by November. The next email is from Gail Malouf. "This is my comment considering item 17 on the AM agenda for the Kern County Board of Supervisors. As a long-life citizen of Kern County and a longtime voter, I am opposed to the all-mail ballot. I do vote absentee at times, which is my choice. Making it a have-to vote-by-mail is taking away our rights. It should remain the same with a choice of voting by mail or in person. If in person, I feel voter ID is a must. There is too much voter fraud going on, and there needs to be some kind of a check system. I will say I was surprised and happy that they do check the signatures on the mail-in ballots. I know this as I know someone that received notification that their signature did not match, and in order for their vote to count, they would have to go in with proof of signature and ID. In the last elections, ballots were lost and suspiciously found at a later date. Voter ID and a choice to vote by mail or in person is a must. Thank you for your consideration of this extremely important matter." The next comment is from Greg Holland. "As a lifelong citizen of Kern County, I want to be put on record that I oppose the resolution for Kern County to be 100% mail-in ballot in the upcoming November elections. In my opinion, this is just another way of ballot harvesting and is ripe for fraud. Everyone should have the right to choose whether they vote in person or mail in their ballot, and those voting in person should have to show ID. This is just another way of taking away our constitutional rights as U.S. citizens. We should actually have a resolution to enforce 100% voter ID. Mail-in only creates a situation of illegal ballot harvesting, and it occurs when third parties like campaign workers collect absentee ballots from voters and deliver them to election officials. And with 100% mail-in ballots, this is what will end up happening. In previous elections, you hear stories of ballots being lost, and then all of a sudden they turn up at a later date. And so far, every story I have seen of that happening has been in favor of one party. So please, please do not approve this resolution. Thank you for your consideration in this timely, very important matter." The next comment is from Inga Barks, District 2. "I am writing in opposition to the suggested expansion of vote-by-mail. While I appreciate that there will be satellite polls, the neighborhood polls are my preference. Perhaps it's from a lifetime of going as a child with my parents or taking my own children with me to see how America works, but personally, I like knowing that I have physically voted and physically dropped that vote in a locked box. I would like to know if my vote at the satellite would be provisional and therefore not counted on election night. This would amount to disenfranchisement. Finally, if I can stand six feet away from people in the grocery line, I can do the same at the polls. And if I can stay six feet away from the 70-year-old in that same grocery line, I'm sure I'm smart enough to do the same with a volunteer at the polls. These comments come from Russell Patron. "Respectfully record my opposition to the above-referenced agenda item. Approval would just leave the door open to rampant ballot harvesting and other chicanery. The exception to the above would be ballots requested by mail by the voter with proper ID. Furthermore, I am 100% in favor of voter ID. This comment is from William Davis. "I realize this is a little late, but I had just had time to write it. My name is William Davis, and I live in District 1. Mick Gleason. Tomorrow, Tuesday, 4/21/20, Kern County Supervisors will meet to determine the fate of our Kern County voting process. They will decide whether to go along with the Kern County Auditor Controller, Mary Bedard, who is lobbying for vote-by-mail, or to agree with many of the residents of Kern who think voting by mail is easily corrupted, corrupted with the use of voter harvesting and with signature elimination. Mary will speak to the supervisors on Tuesday. My adopted mother, Lowell, who marched in the women's suffrage movement, used to say most ideas have pluses and minuses, and we should not all allow the minuses to dominate. Living in Bakersfield, I have been called to jury duty three times. I have witnessed the sitting judge eliminate two potential jurors who could not speak English. Since jury selection comes from the voter rolls, this may imply that non-citizens are voting in Kern County. I am not suggesting that all non-English speakers are not citizens. I am simply suggesting this should be investigated. In addition, motor voter registration could be a basis for illegal voting as well. In another venue, I have noticed while working at the Kern County Fair and promoting voter registration, several different named applicants were using the same address. Again, I am not suggesting this is illegal, but it also should be investigated. Voting by mail allows faceless people to vote, and although convenient, it creates another venue for fraud. Again, do the minuses outweigh the pluses here?" The last email comes from Janice Rush of Tehachapi. "I wish to voice my concern over mail-in voting. The risk of voter fraud is a given. A Stanford study said that almost 25% of illegal recipients of driver's licenses are voting. Voting is a privilege for citizens. Please guard it." Thank you.
My name is Linda Jimenez, L-I-N-D-A, last name J-I-M is in Mary, E-N-E-Z. And I'm calling about the Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting on Tuesday, the 21st of April, 2020. And I don't have the agenda number. I looked on the agenda, but I didn't see an item number for this. But it's in the, let's see, it's about the Kern County Supervisors, current supervisors to consider advocating for all-mail election in November. I'm against this, and I want to know how I can be a part of not allowing this to happen. You know, we have a voice in Kern, and you're going to see a sleeping giant wake up if this is even passed, because we're not going to settle for that. You know, you want to hear the people's voice. We are the people, and we will be heard. So my number...
I stopped it when she started to give her phone number, but there was nothing after that. Okay, next comment.
Hello, my name is Joe Jimenez, last name is spelled J-I-M-E-N-Z. And I'm a 17-year resident of Kern County here in Bakersfield. And for Agenda Item 17 on the AM agenda, my comment is that we disagree with the November mail-in ballot initiative that the Board of Supervisors will be hearing. Second, we want the in-person voting for in-person to remain. Third, we disagree with the implementing of satellite offices regarding the mail-in ballots. We are patriots here that live in Kern County, and we totally disagree with changing the whole system. And even if they're using the COVID-19 as an excuse, we totally disagree with that. People that want to vote should go in person and show ID. As American citizens, we do not want our rights to be taken away from us.
And the last message, the speaker did not give their name.
Hi, I know there's going to be a Board of Supervisors meeting tomorrow. I just wanted to let him know that we want to, what our opinion or our thoughts are in this situation regarding the voting by mail only, which is something we disagree with. We want to leave in-person voting in. We disagree with eliminating the individual polling places, polling sites, and disagree with satellite offices, which would only be used in various circumstances. So just wanted to let you know what we think. And also disagree with mail-in ballots, as was mentioned above, only. So wanted to let you know our thoughts, and as a community, we want to be a part of this process. We don't want things dictated to us, and we want to have a voice in this. So just wanted to let you know. Thank you.
So that is all the public comment received.
Thank you. Do we have any live public comment, potentially?
We actually do not.
Okay. Thank you very much for clearing that. So as to item 17, we have received public comment. We also received a report or representations from Ms. Bedard. Ms. Bedard, I am going to ask you to come back up to the podium, because obviously there's concern from people. We've heard from them this morning, and I'd like you to address some of those. But I would like to say for the record, because I have a suspicion of where this is going, so I want to state some things for the record. I've done electoral campaigns, politics for 20 years, all over the state of California, all over the country, coast to coast. I've registered thousands of voters, broken records on voter registration. This is an area that I care very deeply about, and I think should be exclusively for American citizens. I believe strongly about that. But in that 20 years, Mary, I have come across one instance in literally 20 years where a person was not supposed to be registered to vote, and through a whole host of confusion, was registered. That's, of course, illegal and should never happen. So to me, the urban myths around this issue are so overbloated, and I have never been able to actually pinpoint evidence or real truth about any large-scale voter fraud or anything that would justify the impingement of making voting any easier or streamlined. That's my personal opinion. I'm one of five people, obviously, up here on this matter. But in light of that, I would like to ask for you, as an actual expert in this matter, to clarify, if you can, or confirm whatever you know to be true about the idea that we have somehow some rampant voter fraud reality. I have found your office in particular to be exceptionally cautious, even obsessive about the matchup of the signatures, so much so that when I vote by mail or I bring my ballot in, I always want to make sure that I've done the signature right, because people do their signatures differently. Sometimes they vary slightly. And of course, we have to be cautious about voter fraud. But in my experience, your office has been so profoundly systematically particular about the signature issue and about the righteousness of your process. So wherever this item goes today, I want to state for the record that has been my experience and that you are the actual expert in this matter, and I'd like you to set the record regarding what are people's legitimate concerns about voter fraud. Floor is yours.
Okay, Chairman Perez. One of the things in, a couple of the commenters mentioned was this idea that ballots are lost and then ballots are later found. There is absolutely no truth to that, certainly not in Kern County. We've never had that happen. I think there may be some misunderstanding out there, because people still think that the results that we post on election night are the results. And then when they see it change later on, something, you know, must have happened, something untoward must have happened. The fact remains, because we are already over 70% vote-by-mail. On election night, what those results represent are the early arriving vote-by-mail, where we've had enough time to do all the security checks, to check the signatures, to be able to process them. So those that arrived early, you know, long enough before Election Day that we can do that. And then the actual poll place ballots that are just cast on Election Day. In the last couple of elections, that has resulted in the final results on election night being about 2/3 of the votes. It's not that we find ballots afterwards. We've got the ballots. All of the ballots we've got are... All of the ballots we've got are ballots that were turned in by 8:00 PM on election night, or the, the only exception to that are the ones that were postmarked by Election Day, and we receive within the three days following Election Day. Those are the only ballots that we count. And so there is nothing about losing ballots or finding ballots. We are simply counting ballots. And it takes, in California, because of all the, the rules of the security measures, it does take a long time. We do check the signatures, and my staff is trained in signature recognition. So you don't really need to be too concerned if, obviously, everybody's signature is slightly different. We know that. And so, you know, you're looking for certain loops on letters, or, you know, the slant of the, of the letters. That, that's how they're trained to look at that. And we do go through several, several reviews, and especially if we, if it's thought to be either, you know, we're not sure if it's a match, that goes through several levels to. In fact, in this past election, I actually did a lot of the final review on the challenges before they were not counted, to make sure, after my staff had already gone through them, to make sure that there was nothing we were not counting that should be counted. But in addition, because the, the way the law is, is now, if we do challenge it, and it can be challenged for a couple of reasons, you know, one is that they simply forget to sign the, the envelope, so there is no signature there. Or in some cases, they print their name on the envelope, but there's no way to match that up to the signature we have on their voter registration. So then, if we do challenge it, we then notify the voter, give them a chance to, to correct it, to cure it, to come in and actually give us, you know, to sign an affidavit, or, you know, give us their signature again, or in the case where they left it off entirely, to give us their signature, and then we are able to count those votes, if, if the signature does match what they had in the voter registration. So yes, you know, there, there has never been, in Kern County, in my experience, any kind of widespread voter fraud. We do, anytime we find anything, we turn it over to the district attorney. Generally, that is people trying to vote twice. So you've got people who, who get a vote-by-mail ballot, and then try to vote at the polls. Of course, they have to vote provisionally if they don't turn in their vote-by-mail ballot. So we know, we don't count that provisional ballot if we know that they've already voted their vote by mail. We are able to tell that, and we are able to turn that over to the district attorney. So it's the district attorney investigates. Also, the Secretary of State, in some cases, investigates. They generally get involved if someone tries to vote in two different counties. And again, that's, but again, we are notified if somebody re- registers in another county. We are notified, and then we, you know, pursue that, determine, did they actually move, make sure, if we don't want to eliminate somebody that actually still should be registered, but, so we are able to check that as well. So any kind of voter fraud is investigated by the district attorney. And so I would encourage anybody that actually thinks they know of some voter fraud is to contact the district attorney, because they will investigate, and they have charged people for those. But it's, it's minimal. It's, it's maybe, you know, one or two, maybe a handful of, of cases in any given election that actually the, the district attorney does actually end up charging.
Thank you, Ms. Bedard. That is so helpful and illuminating. Do you have any concerns about voter fraud whatsoever, if you move forward, if we move forward, or the state of California moves forward with this resolution? In Kern County?
In Kern County, and, and no. I mean, we've got all the controls, and really, all this, all this resolution is. It's not us advocating vote by mail. It's, it's, first of all, the, the state is probably 99.999% is certainty they are going to go to, to, you know, issuing mail, mail ballots to everyone, just because of what happened in, in Wisconsin, and even what happened in Los Angeles in March. And part of the reason there was a problem in Los Angeles was they were the only vote-center county that did not mail ballots to all their, their voters. So they reduced the number of their poll sites, but did not issue vote-by-mail ballots to everyone, and so that's why they had the long lines. And then, of course, in Wisconsin, where, again, they, they had vastly reduced polling sites, because they could not get poll workers, for the most part, and, and, but they didn't go to, you know, authorize vote by mail, they didn't extend or extend the vote-by-mail option to people. So people were not either, they had to go stand in a long line, or just not vote. And so, you know, it's, it's most likely, all of the proposals being discussed in Sacramento are for an all-male ballot election. And what that means, again, you're not requiring people to vote by mail. You are simply allowing them to vote by mail.
Well, I would prefer an all-female ballot, myself, as you, as you probably suspect. Okay, Mary, you've been so helpful. I think my colleagues are going to ask tough questions of you, as they should, that's their job. But thank you for your presentation and for your expertise. Supervisor Gleason, you're up.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Mary, thank you very much for your input. I kind of agree with Chairwoman. I think maybe we should have an all-female vote, too. I think we might be better off, from what I see, you know, sometimes. Okay, I got some thoughts. Thank you. I have always been convinced, and I'm even more so convinced now, that our election process in Kern County is unassailable. I think our pros in the Elections Department do phenomenal job. I think there are challenges with timing, and challenges with compiling data, and challenges that you have all over the place, but the integrity of the system, I believe, is flawless. And I have no doubt in my mind that if we were to change, that you would still ensure its infallibility, and I'm deeply indebted to you and to your team. I believe that voting, dropping a ballot in a box, is a foundational element, principle of being an American. I think there are people all through our country and our county that feel empowered and proud to make the trip to the ballot box and drop the ballot in, and I, I think that is something I do not want to disturb. I want to make sure that they know that that will be defended by me at all costs, and by all of us. But you heard from the comments in the public, there's a lot of confusion out there. You heard several of those people saying that they're opposed to an all-male, all-mail-in ballot, and that's not really what we're talking about. And I think the idea of having this change, although it seems subtle to me, not very real and very practical, but it may cause significant confusion in people and get people upset because they're, they're, the tradition of their dropping that, that ballot and bringing the kids to the ballot box, and mom and dad, and everybody going together and voting, and demonstrating the, the fundamental, the, the primary reason for being American will be disturbed. And I think that could have impacts, that confusion could have impacts in our constituents' confidence in our government. And although it, it, the way you describe it, the way I'm hearing you saying it, we're still going to do the same. We're just going to have satellite offices instead of polling offices, fewer satellite offices than several hundred of those polling places. So I'm, I'm not trying, I'm trying to figure out what the actual difference is, and I don't see any, other than in the, the movement away from the tradition of dropping the ballot in the box, which I would be opposed to. I think 72% of our constituents vote by mail, so I think we're probably well ahead of the rest of the state of California in moving in this direction, or we've already moved in that direction. And it'd be hard pressed to find out that we can't accommodate 28% of the people who want to preserve that tradition, who believe in that tradition of, of going and doing the work and, and serving their country by dropping that, that thing in there. So what I see is, I'm not, I don't have the, I don't want to call it cynical, but I want to call it, I don't have the same perspective as a lot of our public do about this. I believe in the integrity of our Elections Department. I believe that you handle the mail-in ballots wonderfully and appropriately, and I have no doubt of how you do it. I, I think, I hear a lot of confusion out there from people, and I know there's more confusion, because there's a, there's a bent-up anger that, that's waiting to, to, to respond to actions that prevent them from taking that primary, that they perceive as taking away their right to participate in the government. 99.999% that the governor's going to do whatever this governor's going to do, and that's fine, but it's not going to be on my vote. So thank you very much.
So that's a no. Okay. Supervisor Swit...
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Bedard, thank you for, for being here, and thank you for your passion on the, the duties for your office. I know that the, the integrity of the election, the access for voters, it's, it, that is your primary concern, to make sure that, that the election is conducted efficiently, and that it's safe for, for, for the employees, it's safe for the voters, and, and that the, the main, the integrity of the process is maintained. And so I, I, I understand, I believe, you know, that you're, you're coming before us with the best of intentions. But I think that there are, there's a lot of concern. Obviously, we heard from some of the folks that, the email, they're called for voter fraud and the integrity of the election. Can you speak to the voter ID? And we heard, we heard several of the folks mention that you should have to show ID when you vote. And so can you speak to that? That is not a choice for us to, to make here. But I'd, I'd like you just to comment about that, so people understand how that, how that works.
Well, in California, at, at a polling site, you do not show an ID. You're not, you're not allowed to, to look at an ID, to request an ID, unless it's a first-time voter in a federal election who registered by mail. And in that case, you are required to, to look at ID. But other than that, you are not allowed to, to, to look at ID. And to be perfectly honest, on a, in a polling site, you sign the roster, and, and we give you the ballot. There is, in some ways, more control over vote by mail, because we are looking at that signature. And as I say, we've been trained, my staff has been trained, on signature recognition. We do examine those signatures very closely. But so, so in that level, there's actually more control in the vote by mail than there is at the polling place.
And I appreciate that, and that, you know, and I don't have any, any reason to doubt that's the case, but I think that you can understand that the ballot harvesting that occurred in the November 2018 election, where you saw, you saw elections where one candidate was ahead by 1,200 votes on election night, and then over the course of the, of the days, as votes trickle in, and, and ballots continue to happen, you see elections swing. You had that with Measure N with the city. I think it was that, that measure was down by over 1,000 votes, at least, and then it wins by, you know, less than 100 a couple of weeks later. And then you had Valadeo's race, the same thing happened there, and a few others. So I think that, and a lot of voters...
Supervisor Switner, if I may, please, because you use the term ballot harvesting for that, for the fact that the change, the, the results changed from election night to after election night. That has nothing to do with, you know, and then again, ballot harvesting is a term that's used for a lot of different things, but all of those ballots came in. Many of them, probably most of them, came in, the ones that came in late, that we counted afterwards, were dropped off by voters themselves at polling sites, or at, at the Elections Office. There's no ballot harvesting there. Those are simply, we, we got to count those votes. The, the results that were there on election night were, were where it stood at, two-thirds of the way, counting the votes. When we finally counted all the votes, which had already been there, they were not, there's no ballot harvesting going on, they were ballots that were dropped off by voters, when we finished checking those signatures and making sure that all of those, those, you know, were eligible to be counted, then we finished counting the votes, and the, the result changed. That has nothing to do with anything that I'm aware of, that, you know, as I say, people use that term ballot harvesting, but that has nothing to do with any concept of ballot harvesting.
Did the, did the law change? And first of all, this, I wasn't, I wasn't levying any accusations at your office, or any of your employees, or anything like that. What I was talking about is voter perception. You had a lot of emails from folks today that demonstrated that the perception is, is that vote by mail is, is more, is more open to, to, to fraud than by, than dropping the, the ballot in the box, as Supervisor Gleason said. And whether that's true or not, I'm, I'm just talking about perception. But in regards to ballot harvesting, wasn't the law changed a couple of years ago, where you no longer, where, where anyone could go and bring in someone's ballot versus, versus a family member?
Up until a couple of years ago, it had to be, you could only entrust your ballot to a family member or a member of your household to return it for you.
And, and so, and that changed. And so you could have operatives for campaigns who were contacting voters and going and picking up their ballots and bringing them in. Could you not?
You can, and there's nothing illegal about that, and all, all parties are eligible to be able to do that, if that's, and, and it's really up to the voter whether they trust that person with their ballot. What would be illegal in that process would be if you took somebody's ballot and then didn't turn it into the Elections Office. That would be illegal. But simply picking, you know, offering to take somebody's ballot and turn it in for them, when they've already voted it, they've already sealed it, and they've already signed the envelope, and simply returning it to the Elections Office, there is nothing illegal about it, and there's, there's really nothing questionable about it. It, it was a change, and a lot of the reason for the change in that law, by the way, was the fact if, if you had somebody, maybe an elderly person, living alone, no family members close by, but couldn't get their, their, you know, their, couldn't get their ballot to the, to the, to turn it in themselves, and maybe it was too late to put it in the mail. If a neighbor or a friend had offered to take that ballot back and return it to the Elections Office, that would have been illegal back then. That's no longer illegal now.
Sure, right. It is, it is lawful, and that's what I meant by the law being changed a couple of years ago. But that, when people talk about ballot harvesting, they're talking about campaigns or party apparatus that are going out contacting voters, because they get a list, and they say, okay, these people haven't, these are vote-by-mail people, they haven't turned their ballot in yet, let's call them and see if they have voted, and we'll go pick up their ballot. And so that's, that's what I'm talking about by ballot harvesting, and that's, when people refer to that, I think that's what they mean. But once again, wasn't imputing your office or any of your employees, I'm just saying that that, that for some folks, right, has, that for some folks is a concern. But I think ultimately, I'm going to vote no on this, and the reason being is that I think that vote by mail is a choice. And the fact that we have 70% that are already, already voting by mail, that's perfectly fine. I vote by mail for the same reason a lot of people do, is that you don't, you don't know exactly where you're going to be on Election Day. Election Day can be very busy for, you know, for some people, especially if you're in our, our line of work. We usually have a meeting on Election Day, and so we're here, you know, we're here pretty much all day long. So I vote by mail, and that's a choice, but some people want the choice, as Supervisor Gleason was saying, they want the feeling of going in and putting, and putting their vote in the box. I used to live in an all-vote-by-mail precinct when, when I lived in Bakersfield, and I voted by mail. My wife, she loved to go in and actually cast the vote, even though it was an all-vote-by-mail precinct. And so she would take her ballot, and she would turn it in. And so people still want to have that experience, they want to preserve that experience, and I, I think that, that I need to, to honor that. And the, the COVID-19 situation, that's, election is seven, the election is seven months from now, we don't know where we're going to be. We just saw a referral by, by the board that we're wanting to get the economy back and running, we want to see life, I think everyone wants life to, to return to normal. We don't know where we will be, but if people are concerned about going on Election Day and voting, they can request a vote, to vote by mail. They can request to do that. And so to me, I'd like to preserve the choice for them to vote by mail or to go to a polling site. And so I, with all due respect, I'm not going to support your, your request.
Just, just to clarify, people would still have the option, this gives people an option. They have a vote, they are mailed a vote-by-mail ballot. They do not have to vote it. We are, we would be having as many, as many satellite offices as we can possibly do. We want to have as many in-person voting opportunities as we possibly can, as will be safe for health and safety of, of the voters and for the election workers. So we will try to have as many, but we're just saying we need to be gearing up now for the, the very possibility, or even the probability, that we will not have anywhere near enough polling sites for people to just be able to go in. And so this just gives people options. It's, they would have the option to vote by mail, they would have the option to go into one of the, whatever the polling sites are, the satellite offices. They would have those options, and, you know, and if somebody, maybe they didn't request a vote-by-mail ballot, and then they come down with COVID-19 the day before Election Day, and they're quarantined, well, they don't have a vote-by-mail ballot, and it's too late to request a vote-by-mail ballot. So, I mean, again, this is simply giving people options. That's all this is. It's recommend, and it's recommending that people be given options, and that counties be given options. I mean, that's probably the biggest issue here in this, this proposed resolution, is that counties need to be able to decide on their own what's best for their own voters, and not have Sacramento or these outside groups, you know, you know, telling us exactly how many polling sites we can have, what we can do. We don't know. And, and every county could be different. I mean, the, the COVID-19 situation is different in, in every county. You know, it could be different for, different counties in November as well. So, so really, what this, what this proposal is, is to tell, to ask the governor to allow counties the option to determine on their own what's best for their voters.
Supervisor Switner, are you done? Mary, thank you so much. Supervisor Maggard.
Thank you. A question was asked in one of those...
A question was asked in one of those questions that was read to us, as to whether or not a vote cast at one of the regional satellite polling places would be considered to be a provisional vote.
And at this point, we're still looking into how we would set up these satellite offices. We did actually do preliminary work after 2018, after we had such long lines here. So we did start that process. We are now, and my staff that's working remotely, they have been looking at this, they've been contacting other counties. So some of that would be depending on what kind of equipment we can have, what kind of setup we can have. So even if, but even if it is the fact that you would be voting provisionally at one of these satellite offices, again, I think that comment was somehow, that disenfranchised you because it wasn't counted on election night. But again, the count, okay, so we count it a couple of days after, it still ends up in the final count. Again, we would need to check. But I don't know at this point whether it would have to be provisional or whether we would be able to have people vote regularly.
Are there ever circumstances in which you do not count, include provisional votes?
We always look at all of them. I mean, unless they are not eligible to cast a vote, but any eligible ballot, we count. I mean, so yes, the fact that it gets counted later on in the process does not disvalue the vote itself, it will get counted.
So I just want to make sure this is crystal clear. So is there any point at which that provisional ballot cast is not included in the final results?
As long as it's determined to be eligible, it will always be included in the final results.
Thank you. It gave me, I remember when I saw on TV news, when voters in Iraq voted for the first time in an election, and remember they dipped their finger in a cup of ink, and they had a blue four-finger. It gave me a lump in my throat to watch people overcome the generations of fear and repression they had to be able to say to the whole world, I voted, and they stuck their finger in that, in that bowl of, or that cup of ink. It is a fundamental element of being an American and living in a democracy. And I don't, I want to resist whenever possible, someone outside of where I live telling me how I should go about doing, how I should conduct my votes, voting process. I have run for office nine times, I think I have, that makes me certainly not the normal, a lot of people say I'm not normal anyway, but that certainly makes me not the typical voter. I know firsthand the process that an election sets in place where someone running for office is developing a relationship with the electorate, with those people who are going to cast votes. And through the course of an election, through the course of a campaign cycle, you come to define yourself, you come to make certain points, there are ebbs and flows, and the momentum shifts back and forth, and I think that's a significant part of it, of the process. Do you remember, this is a long time ago, so some people won't remember this, but for those that have been around a while, do you remember 1980, when Jimmy Carter and Ronald Reagan were running against one another for the presidency? Jimmy Carter was a wonky guy who was a brilliant man, not big on personality probably, but a brilliant man who had complete command of all the facts. Ronald Reagan was much more of an affable, kind of a stylist, and much more or less specific on the details. But at the very, just a few days before the election, when it appeared that Carter would have a likely opportunity to win reelection, just a few days before, they, Carter for some reason said that he would have this debate with Ronald Reagan. And in this debate, Ronald Reagan looked in the camera, and after Carter had answered all these questions with meticulous detail, Ronald Reagan looked in the camera and asked a simple question. He asked, I want to ask you, all the voters, if you are better off than you were four years ago. That one question changed the entire crescendo of what, all the efforts that had happened, that one moment changed everything. And it happened a few days before the election day occurred. What we are witnessing in the way that the election process is taking place is a subtle but fundamental change in the way campaigns occur. And you, regardless of, I have complete respect for you, Ms. Bedard, but regardless of your passion, your opinions about whether or not the vote by mail has significance or not, is, that's your opinion. I have a different opinion. I think that the process is subject, not to fraud, I agree that, I don't believe that fraud has ever affected an election in Kern County, and I'm not concerned today that it will, nor am I concerned about outside interference and the Russians affecting our election. I'm confident in the integrity of our process. What I am not confident in is, what we are witnessing is a changing of the way in which we run the electoral process, and it is, what it makes it more subject to is manipulation. And I think that manipulation should be resisted. A fundamental example of that is what Supervisor Scrivener talked about a moment ago, which is ballot harvesting. When we watch, when it is possible to look and see which ballots have not yet been cast, so when you, when you vote, is it not the case that when I vote by mail, there is, someone is able to determine whether or not my vote has been cast? Is that, is that the case?
A voter can go in and determine whether or not, you know, whether their ballot, where their ballot is in the process and where it, you know, whether it's been counted.
So is it not possible to obtain the voter list which indicate which ballots have not yet been cast?
You can obtain the voter list, and it would indicate, you know, who are vote by mail ballot, who might vote by mail voters.
And that is a strategy employed by some, which allows them to specifically contact individual voters. Those individual voters are contacted by someone oftentimes who has an agenda. When they knock on the door, they knock on the door, and it is their agenda to determine if the voter has voted, and if they have not voted, would they like to vote? And then they have an opportunity to lobby that person at the door as to how they might go about doing that voting. That process is part of what Supervisor Scrivener alluded to was, through ballot harvesting, a strategy that was employed by some very effectively. And it, I'm not worried about fraud, I'm not worried about someone voting who should not be voting. What I am worried about is the process is subject to manipulation, and I want to resist that with every fiber of my ability, because I don't want the process to be manipulated. Sometimes the process is affected inadvertently, not intentionally. And I'm not criticizing you, I'm going to cite an example, though, of in our last election, the voter guides were, for whatever reason, delayed. Many people cast their votes about very important issues and did not have the benefit of having received the voter guides with opinions for and against those issues that were, that were at issue.
May I just, just, you mentioned that they were late. They were not, they were later than, than they have been in the past, yes.
I'd like to finish, Mary. I'd like to finish. You can defend it, I'm not criticizing you, it's just an incident that occurred. When we, and when that did happen last time, I remember you're suggesting to the public that, well, that many people haven't voted, they can wait and vote, you know, when they have them. Well, here, the suggestion is being made that people should vote early. Voting early is a right that people have, I'm completely comfortable if they choose to do that. But voting early allows for this manipulation to occur. So without belaboring this any longer, I believe that it is important that we try to have as much influence over how we want to do this locally as we can, that we don't let outsiders come in and tell us how we should go about conducting our votes. And I will not support, with all due respect, your suggestion that we move in this direction.
Welcome to my world, Mary Bedard. Supervisor Couch is in the queue. Supervisor Couch, are you ready?
Yes, thank you. I just have a couple of, two questions really for Mary Bedard. And I want to paint a scenario, I'll use myself in the scenario instead of other people. Let's assume that the ballots, my mail-in ballots show up at my house, and I tell my son, who happens to live here right now, just give me your ballot, sign the back of it, I sign the back of it as well, in the appropriate spots, and all the loops and everything are perfect, and it looks exactly like the signatures that are on file. But I vote his ballot, I fill it out for him, he doesn't even ask what I'm going to do with it. My question to you, Mary, is, is that a legally, is that, has that vote, when I go to turn it in, is that a legal ballot? Have I followed the law?
I mean, from our standpoint, if we, obviously, we will-
Not from your stand, not from your standpoint yet, have I followed the law?
I would perhaps a bit turn to counsel, but really, you are supposed to vote your own ballot, you're not supposed to allow other people to vote your ballot, so.
Okay, so that is, so that ballot has been illegally voted, is the term I'll use. But then, I take it to your office and I turn it in, and you see, or your staff sees the loops, and they're perfect, would you count that ballot?
And yes, if that is what the voter signed, that's, all we can do is base it on what the voter signed, and yes, we would count that ballot.
Thank you very much. That's all I've got, cheers. Am I now running the meeting?
Supervisor Gleason, I assure you that in the event that I am attending our meeting remotely, that I will rise at some point, and you will see that I am wearing trousers.
We don't need you to run the meeting, Supervisor Couch, thanks. You're not even here, apparently. Supervisor Gleason, did you have something to say?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Maggard? Supervisor Scrivener? Okay. Great. Mary Bedard, do you have anything else to add?
No, again, I would just emphasize the fact that as far as not allowing other people to tell us how to run our elections, that is the point of this resolution, is so that Kern County can decide how to set up the individual in-person voting, you know, subject to what the health restrictions might be at the time, and what resources we would have available. So that is the point of this, is to give counties that independence and not be dictated to by the state.
Ms. Bedard, thank you so much for your professionalism and expertise in presenting to the public and to the staff here, your sound position. It appears as though there is not support to do what you're asking, which is truly astonishing to me, but I don't get to make the decisions up here, as you know. So I am one person, and it appears as though we do not have a motion. And so I want to thank you for your devotion to Kern County, your remarkable patriotism, and your contributions to the well-being of this county. I admire you, thank you. Anything else? On that matter, Kathy?
No, ma'am, there are no speakers.
Okay, we're going to move on then to item number 33, excuse me, 39, and we're going to hear it in conjunction with 57?
Correct.
Kathy, but we will vote on them separately?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So as our staff prepares, we're going to move to item 39, which is a report on the county's response to the COVID-19 emergency proposed appropriation of unanticipated revenue from California Business Consumer Services and Housing Agency to protect the health and safety of the homeless population and reduce the spread of COVID-19 outbreak. And then, of course, additional fiscal-related actions on 57. We're going to go to CAO Riedel, if the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. As you said, that 57 will be taken up by your board subsequent to this presentation and is part of this fairly complex thing that we're doing to address COVID-19. I'm going to make a quick statement, and then I'm going to ask if our Director of Public Health will kick it off and provide an overview of where things stand with regard to the county's response. But the purpose of this item is for your board to both receive an update on the county's response and preparedness efforts on COVID-19, and also to address some things that we're doing to prepare for a potential surge in cases that continues to exist. This letter that you've read and is in your packet provides for a number of actions that will enhance the county's response through coordination of local partners, by ensuring appropriate resources are made available to support temporary isolation units, or TIUs that have been provided by the state that are currently situated at the Kern County Fairgrounds, supporting the staging of equipment for an alternative care site, also known as an ACS, in addition to preparing for operations of that ACS if it is activated. So before we get into the detail of that, I'm going to have Mr. Zerfus from my office present, I'm going to ask our Director of Public Health and his group to kick it off.
Good morning, board members. Five weeks ago today, we initiated our activation of our Department Operations Center. This is supported by the Emergency Operations Center that is now at an activation level of three, which is the level, the same level that we activated during the Erskine Fire and the Ridgecrest earthquake. So there's a lot of help that we are being provided from the Emergency Operations Center. Public health is, currently has four main areas of focus that we're working on. We are actively investigating all COVID-positive cases. Although we have a core group in our Department Operations Center, our epidemiologists and nurses, that area has continued to grow. We have approximately 50 employees now doing contact investigations. The second area that we're working on is the county's compliance with the governor's order and the California Department of Public Health guidelines to make sure that we're operating in compliance. We've received almost 1,900 complaints from the community about businesses that are operating in violation. We are actively interpreting 14 pages of the governor's critical infrastructure list, and this references the comment from Supervisor Maggard and Scrivener about having a task force assist with that function. And we're sending out health inspectors to provide education and awareness to encourage compliance. The third area is, we're actively developing guidance documents and providing resources, including PPE, to our community. These recommendations vary in nature, from assistance with funeral homes, to sporting events, to skilled nursing facilities, and it is extensive, that occupies a good amount of our time. And then finally, the fourth area of focus currently is the development and implementation of the alternative care site, that will be reviewed a little bit more. But the way to view this is, in my world, it's a field hospital. If the hospitals reach their maximum capacity, and then they are required to deploy their 40% surge capabilities, their plan, and they reach 140%, and there still are patients coming in, then we need to have a way to help our community if our medical resources are exhausted. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. So those four objectives occupy our time, we operate seven days a week, there's a tremendous amount of activity and energy at public health. The second area I want to talk about is our COVID-positive geographic data and the information that we release publicly. As you're aware, the department has been releasing data regarding Kern County COVID-positive cases since our first case on March 17th. The department has been following very carefully the state's guideline on what level of data can be released while still maintaining compliance to state and federal privacy laws. Members of your board have asked and tasked county council and public health to explore options that are outside of the state guidance, but, and that would allow for the release of more detailed resident geographic information about our cases while still not violating their individual private medical information rights. The state guidance document uses a pre-established statistical method that assigns risk- The state guidance document uses a pre-established statistical method that assigns risks to the public release of health information and assigns limits of what information we can release and the type and the detail of the information. However, the documents and state and federal HIPAA laws indicate that an independent statistical analysis could be conducted to explore additional methods of release of information. County council has obtained outside legal assistance from a law firm with, with significant HIPAA experience on the East Coast, and they've actually provided us some assistance and connected us to some highly credentialed HIPAA statisticians for this endeavor. Yesterday, we had some calls with these statisticians, and on the phone calls, they have initially indicated that we may be in a position to release more detailed geographic information as long as we follow some defined parameters that they are providing. County council is finalizing that agreement with this company, and we are optimistic that we will have direction and legal support in the near future to release additional information, hopefully by the end of next week, even that soon. And then finally, I would like to turn this over to Bren Kerrigan to walk us through in a little bit more detail the website that we have recently launched and some of the new information that is being provided.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Last week, we launched a more robust dashboard for reporting our data to the public. Previously, the department was reporting the current COVID-19 positive case count and testing, which was updated twice daily on weekdays and once on Saturday and Sundays. Now, as you can see on the dashboard, the department is reporting data in a more meaningful way by not just providing cumulative data, but providing a visual representation of what COVID-like, COVID-19 looks like in Kern County. Of importance to note is now we are reporting positive COVID-19 cases by specimen collection date. Previously, we were reporting cases by the date the, the lab reported the positive case to the department. Reporting positive cases by specimen collection date is a more meaningful way to report positive cases in Kern County as we are reporting the case on the date that individual was sick, sought medical attention, and was deemed a suspected COVID-19 case by a medical provider. Reporting positive cases by specimen collection date is a more consistent way of reporting illness in Kern County as it removes the variable of any delay in time it takes to process the specimen at the lab or report the test results to the department. At the top of the dashboard is a chart that illustrates Kern's current cases or approximately the most current two weeks' worth of data. The current chase cases chart is a bar chart with positive COVID-19 cases reported by specimen collection date. There is a shaded area on the chart that is subject to change as we receive reports of positive COVID-19 cases since we are reporting based on specimen collection date. There are also two lines on the chart. The white line illustrates the number of cases in Kern. This line can only go up as it is cumulative. The green line, however, illustrates the active cases in Kern County at any given time. The active cases represents the number of presumed infectious people in Kern County as we receive more positive cases. We hope to see this number stabilize and then begin to decrease as we see more residents recover from this illness. The all-cases chart illustrates the same information as the current cases chart, however, it includes all Kern County data since COVID-19 began. The case status chart breaks down the cumulative cases in Kern County by the current status of the individual. There are four different statuses possible for each case. The individual has either recovered or meets the CDC criteria that they are no longer considered infectious, isolated at home, or is a current positive case but the illness is not severe enough to warrant hospitalization, isolated at home, or is a current positive case with symptoms severe enough to warrant hospitalization, or unfortunately dead, having succumbed to COVID-19. Let's look at today as an example. The green portion of the bar represents recovered cases. As of today, two-hundred-and-sixty-two Kern County patients have recovered. The blue portion of the bar represents the patients that are isolated at home. Three-hundred-and-eighty-five of Kern County COVID-positive residents are self-managing their illness within their own home. Twenty-one, or the pink section, are currently requiring hospitalization. And tragically, to date, we have lost three residents, which is the purple section. An important takeaway from this chart is that currently ninety percent, ninety-six percent of COVID-19 cases in Kern County are either recovered or self-managing their illness within their own home. The last chart is testing. This graph illustrates the status of testing in Kern County. This chart illustrates the number of tests that are positive, negative, and pending results, and also the percentage that each of these testing statuses represent of the total tests in Kern County. Moving down the dashboard, we have highlighted some important numbers, including total cases, recovered cases, deaths, and non-resident cases. Additionally, we have a chart that illustrates the cumulative cases by age range. From this chart, you can see that fifty-nine percent of our total cases have impacted the eighteen-to-forty-nine age group. And last but certainly not least, at the bottom of our dashboard, we have included our regional map with cumulative cases broken out into five regions of the county. We are currently working on launching a Spanish version of this dashboard. Madam Chair and members of the board, this concludes my comments.
Thank you very much, Bren. Are, is there any questions of this team now from the board colleagues? Okay. Is that complete your presentation, Matt?
Yes, ma'am. I think we'll turn it back over to the CAO.
Excellent. Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Again, I'd like to introduce our COO, Mr. Zurfus, who is going to walk you through some actions that will enhance the county's response through coordination of local partners by ensuring appropriate resources are available to support temporary isolation units or TIUs located at the Kern County Fairgrounds specifically for the, our homeless population. Those were provided by the state in addition to supporting the staging of equipment for an alternative care site, also known as ACS, and also preparing for operations of that ACS if that is activated. Mr. Zurfus.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. It's my pleasure to be here before you to talk about some of these additional items that are being, measures that are being implemented to deal with the, the COVID-19 outbreak in, in Kern County and, and the pandemic locally. So as, as the CAO mentioned, we are dealing with these temporary isolation units. So these temporary isolation units are, were provided by the state of California. We have fifteen of them. They are essentially travel trailers, camping-style trailers that were given to us at no cost by the state for the specific purpose of isolating either COVID-positive homeless individuals or homeless individuals, individuals that are symptomatic and awaiting test results. So these are the, the large percentage of, of the population that currently is awaiting test results and symptomatic or recovering or doing so at home. We saw that just a moment ago on the public health website. So what happens when someone doesn't have a home to go to in order to recover, but they don't meet the level of need that they need to be in the hospital any longer? That's the purpose of the temporary isolation units. So the, these units, there's fifteen of them, are currently located at the, at the fair site. And, and the services provided to individuals there are being provided by the Kern County Hospital Authority. And that's pursuant to an agreement actually on, on today's agenda, item number forty-one. And, and that agreement provides the Kern Hospital to provide these services for a period of ninety days. And so when we talk about wraparound services, they're really all-encompassing. They're providing some general level medical oversight, and then if there was any specific hospitalization or, or care needed, they would utilize the hospital facility to do so. But they also provide other, other services such as security and feeding and oversight and, and just managing the whole facility and the needs of that facility. So Kern, the Kern County Hospital Authority is currently doing that pursuant to that agreement, which is, is on your agenda for today. The funding for that operation is, is actually a combination of efforts. So this is a collaborative effort, a collaborative effort on behalf of the, the county, the city of Bakersfield, and the Bakersfield-Kern Regional Homeless Collaborative. So all three of those agencies were granted money through SB eighty-nine from the state to deal specifically with, with COVID-19 impacts on the homeless community. And so through an agreement, another agreement also on your agenda today, those three entities have pooled those funds together to provide a suite of, of services to, to meet that need, that demand in the homeless population here dealing with COVID. One of those, a major piece of that, has to do with the operation of these trailers and this whole temporary isolation unit program, which Kern Medical is writing for. So, so that's where the funding is coming from. So on today's, under this item, one of the recommended actions has to do with the, with the funding of recognizing the appropriation of eight-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars in both revenue and expenditures. So that is amending the budget to provide for those grant funds that are coming in from that cooperation agreement between the city, the county, and the collaborative, and then being able to utilize those funds to provide those services at the temporary isolation units, and then the few other services that are provided pursuant to that agreement. Again, that's a collaborative effort between all three of those agencies. So that's an overview of the temporary isolation units. Next, I want to talk a little bit about the alternative care site. So that's also at the fairgrounds, and I, and I'm going to refer to a PowerPoint presentation that should be in front of you. I've included a few slides. So I know this, this is fairly hard to see. Unfortunately, I couldn't make that, the words any bigger on here, but to give you a general idea of the layout of the fairgrounds and where these operations are taking place, as Mr. Constantine referenced, this is effectively, when we're talking about an alternative care site, it is, it is an overflow for the hospitals. So when the hospitals hit a hundred percent of their capacity, we would activate this site. It would then be available to care for patients. As the hospitals continue into their surge capacity, we would be able to, to take, offload some of those needs at this location. So on the general overview, the, the kind of sketch, rather, of the fairgrounds, the top center portion that's boxed in red, that's where the temporary isolation units are. So they actually border, that's P Street, that is, kind of runs down the, the middle on the left. And so they, one set of those trailers butts up against P Street and the other butts up to the north. They're actually a little bit different than what's shown on, on this representation. And then the, the horizontal trailers, there's a management trailer there used by Kern Medical currently. The building, buildings below that in the long, the long section that's outlined in red, those are the buildings that have been designated for the alternative care site. So they run along P Street. Those are the major fair buildings. And when you, when I refer to the, the picture with the satellite imagery on it, it gives you a better, better view of, of what we're calling Building One and Building Two. Building One is the, going to be the primary location for the alternative care site as far as actually having individuals there needing care. And we have a, a general layout there that would accommodate about a hundred-and-eighty individuals in that facility. So the original estimate was about a hundred in Building One and then a hundred-and-fifty in Building Two. As we've progressed in the planning and dealing with the fire marshals and, and working through the, the various planning stages of this, we've refined that and now it's up to a hundred-and-eighty individuals could be serviced in Building One.
Mr. Zurfus, could you clarify something for us?
Sure.
Is the, the main entrance into the fair where most of the public enters, is that between Buildings One and Two, or is it Building One to the north of that area?
I believe that's correct. I don't, is-
It's between two and three.
Between two and three.
Between two and three. So we're a little further to the south of that.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
As, as I've heard, the fair is contemplating not canceling for a while. It would significantly impact the ability of the fair to have access to the grounds when we are occupying most of the area where the public would initially come into the fairground.
Absolutely. And, and we'll stay in close contact with the fair, with the fair administration and how to make that work for both parties. So, so patient one, so that gives you a general overview of, of what it might look like. This is all subject to change. These plans are developing really on a daily basis. You have a very capable and diverse group that's working on this. It's being led by public health as far as the, the operation for the ACS itself, but it's through the EOC effort. So you, on this, on this committee that's working on this project, you have representatives from all the major, all the major areas of, of the county and their expertise. So here's a few recent pictures from inside Building One and Building Two. And so what, what it intends to show you is just give you an idea of what these facilities look like without all of the fair equipment in them. I rarely see these empty. So, so you can see some, some supplies being accumulated. Those are supplies for the ACS, those pallets. They're palletized currently, but they are there and available in, in the top left and the top right, and then again on the bottom right as well, along with the trailer with supplies as well. On the bottom left, those units are actually shower units. So those are portable shower units that are designed for use in, in disaster situations. Those are, are very heavy-duty. They're typically rolled out to, to wildfire scenes, for example. We have about twenty shower, individual shower stalls in that facility, as well as a, a hand-washing station that's there to provide additional resources just in case we need to activate. So, so that's, those are fairly recent pictures, but it gives you an idea of what it looks like. From a cost standpoint, we, we have done a detailed budget on what this might cost. There's a lot of estimates. And so this is a scaling budget. On, on the, on, on the left-hand side, you see a low patient count of ten, all the way up to a patient count of two-hundred-and-fifty. This includes facility costs, staffing costs, so all of our healthcare workers and supporting staff, operational costs for supplies and such. There really isn't any capital included in this, but there is a contingency, and that's the top bar. So you can see the blue bar i- in the middle that is the significant portion is staffing costs. And obviously, as our, as the estimated patient count escalates, that staffing cost escalates as well. So these are in thousands, so, and there is some economies of scale. We are targeting the one-hundred patient mark as, as sort of the benchmark to, to get things prepared and make sure we have capability to service at that level. That is one million, seven-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollars a month. So these are monthly operating costs. I mentioned economies of scale. Obviously, as we get more people there, some of these fixed costs per capita go down. And so this just, this chart, charts the, in the yellow or the lighter color, the patient count as that increases, and then we see the blue, which is the cost per patient. It's actually cost per patient per month, or per day, rather, continues to go down. And so you can see that trend line. And when we're at that hundred mark is where those two intersect, and that's roughly five-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. It's intended to highlight that there's a certain amount of fixed costs that are unavoidable in just opening or even being ready to open a facility like this, regardless of whether you're serving ten patients or, or two-hundred patients. But the cost per patient per day does come down, obviously, as, as it increases. An idea of how this, this operation gets funded, this is a, a complex funding scenario and a lot of moving pieces. So we have FEMA, we have federal cost reimbursement that we are, we are monitoring and actively engaged with, and that would be roughly seventy-five percent of eligible costs. We have a state, the Cal OES reimbursement potentially. That hasn't been formally announced yet, but that could be up to eighteen-point-seven-five percent of eligible costs. You're going to hear in a moment from our planning director regarding some CDBG money related to the CARE Act. We are planning for that, to pay for that large staffing component here. Staffing, regular-time county employee staffing is not reimbursable under normal FEMA guidelines. So that would take that burden off of the, the local share, and, and then what's remaining would be local. There are a lot of other funding components out there currently in play. In fact, the, the CARE Act has made available some additional funding that may be able to, to be used to alleviate any general fund impact from this operation, but we need to make sure it's compatible with FEMA reimbursement as well. So there's just, there's several moving parts there, and the CARE Act itself has several different funding mechanisms that it's pushing money out through and that we're monitoring regularly and really constantly and making sure that we're, we're taking advantage of applying for the- of applying for the right funding and applying that right funding to get the most advantage for the county so that this doesn't become a cost burden upon the county. So this is intended to give you an idea of how these funding components might come together, but it is subject to change because of the legislation that's continuing to emerge. And the details about how those programs can be used and what they can pay for is continuing to be pushed out as well. So we're monitoring that, and we're actively pursuing all cost reimbursements, not just for this, but really for all COVID-related expenses that the county is currently incurring. So on your recommended actions for this item today, there's a couple fiscal components related to the ACS. So in order to stand up the ACS, there are some one-time cost components. And then there are some standby cost components. Even if we don't open, those costs are going to be, continue to be incurred or have been incurred in just to be ready to be open, right? In order to be prepared to open the doors. And so the total there, it's $642,000. And you will have a recommended action for a budget transfer, moving that money from one-time contingencies, or from contingencies, rather, to be used for these one-time standby costs. We're also recommending an appropriation to fund one month at the 100-patient count level. That's that $1.75 million. And that would operate the ACS for one month. So it's not that we're going to rush out and spend that money and open it up prematurely. But if the occasion comes to pass where we have to open it up, that gives us the spending authority in order to do that. And finally, the other update, or the other action that's recommended on this item is a policy update. And this is an update to our procedures and policies manual regarding disaster cost recovery procedures. That update is intended simply to change the procedures to allow the CAO's office to have access to those funds and spend directly from those funds. Meaning that typically, in a disaster scenario, our departments incur the costs of responding to the disaster, and they're backfilled with this money that's set aside for disaster response. In this case, these costs are so substantial that we really can't expect the departments to bear those costs upfront. So this simply allows access to those funds directly to be used for this specific purpose and being the alternative care site. So that concludes my presentation.
Well, you are a consummate professional, and your presentation was exceptional. Thank you, thank you so much. It looks like Supervisor Maggert has some questions for you right now, Supervisor? Forgive me. And so Supervisor Scrivener, is that now, or do you want to wait?
Well, I guess I could ask a couple of questions now, if that's okay.
Please do.
Welcome, first of all, welcome before the board, Mr. Service. Very good presentation. Thank you for all your work, and we're happy to have you. So welcome to Kern County, to the county. I know you were already here in the county. So just want, for clarification, the $834, roughly $1,000, $834,785,000, that's, I think you said SB 89 funding? Is that right? And so that's between the county, the city of Bakersfield, and the Kern County Homeless Collaborative. That is for the one-time, I'm going to just kind of generalize this, one-time setup costs plus some standby costs. And that's for the 15 homeless trailers and the 15 trailers for homeless care?
So Supervisor Scrivener through the chair, let me clarify. So the $834,000, there's really, there's very little setup costs involved with those trailers. So the $834,000, and there is a table included in the agenda item related to that agreement that breaks it down into individual components. But roughly $469,000 is going to be directly passed through the county and paid to Kern Medical in order to provide the wraparound services for those trailers.
Okay.
So that's for the trailers.
Okay, thank you. And so how long, say, okay, for each of those trailers, it's 15, how many people can each of those house at any one time?
So...
Is it one person per at any one time?
I think technically, they could house more than one person per if that demand were to get to that point. Currently, the plan is to do one per trailer and then evaluate it if the need exceeded that. But they could house more than one.
Okay, so for that 400, roughly 400-plus thousand dollars for all the wraparound care, how long would that last if all 15 of those trailers were full?
90 days.
90 days, okay. So we have 90 days roughly of funding if they're full, if all 15 are full?
So it's 90 days. Some of those costs, there's, so today, we haven't had anyone in the trailers, in the temporary isolation units yet. But the services, some of those services are already being provided. So the security services are on-site 24/7.
So whether it's, whether all 15 are full or not, it's still the same amount?
Yes, yes.
So there could be two people there, and we're still, it's still $400,000 for 90 days at any one time?
There is a cost basis component to it. So it's not that you'd pay the whole amount if no one were there, but there's a significant amount of those costs that are incurred regardless of the level of occupancy.
Okay, thank you. And then with the, I understand that the $1.7 roughly million is for one month at 100-patient census there. And then there was the, what was the 642, was that the standby cost? That's if, go ahead.
Yeah, so that's, the 642 covers two months of standby costs.
Even if it's empty?
Correct. And the startup costs too. So we had to install communications to that site so that there's internet and connectivity and everything. And our ITS group did a great job in standing that up. There were costs like that that are for infrastructure, getting the shower units there that you saw, having those on-site and ready to go. So there's one-time costs for communications, purchase of supplies, purchase of cots, right? Those types of things that need to be there and ready to go. And then there are standby costs, which are primarily related to equipment rental even, that we're paying to have there even if we're not activated. So two months of standby costs and all the startup costs.
Okay. When do we anticipate having it ready?
So it'll be ready by the end of this month.
So at the end of this month, it's ready? Okay, so end of April. And so if we're standing by for May and June, it's $642,000 in costs for just standby costs. If we start to get patients that are coming in, then those costs start to go up for, we're thinking a max of $1.7 million for a month, for each month of operation if we have 100 people, and then it scales down if we have less to some extent.
Correct. And it would actually start off less than that. So the $1.75 was at the 100. We had those budget numbers at 1020.
Yeah, I saw the stair step.
So it would ramp up based on occupancy at that point.
Okay. I guess here's my overarching question. In looking at our numbers, fortunately, we've seen new cases start to taper off, and they've been somewhat flat for the last three days or so. The, you know, if we had a total of 671 cases we've had in the county right now, today, 21 of those are hospitalized, which is roughly 3% of the total cases we've had. 262 have already recovered. Do we know, are we keeping in contact with our hospitals, local hospitals every day about their patient census? I mean, what I'm seeing on a national level, we have some hotspots where some of the hospitals are seeing a surge of patients. But many hospitals are in dire straits economically, financially, because of, no one's in the hospital right now. You're not having any elective surgeries coming in. People are staying away from the hospital. They're all ramped up for COVID, yet they don't have anyone there. And so they're starting to lay people off. And so what's going on at our local hospitals? And what's the likelihood that we are going to need this based on what we're seeing with the trend lines and what the hospital censuses are? I mean, I want to be prepared, but I also, I want to know, we're going in and we're looking at spending quite a bit of taxpayer money. Granted, it's not county money, per se. If we start operating, I think we're somewhere around, what, $50,000 a month or so? Did I read that right?
That's correct, that's the estimate.
But it's still our money. I mean, it's taxpayer money. And so if you could answer that, Matt, please.
Sure. So we do stay in contact, daily contact, with the hospitals, with all 10 acute care hospitals in the county. They report their daily bed use and ICU bed use that we review daily. We have access to that now. And you are correct, hospitalization rates are at a historic low. When Russell Judd joined us at the last briefing, he mentioned 60% occupancy. It seems to have been even lower since then. Elective surgeries are canceled, people are staying away. So the capacity that hospitals have to accommodate COVID-positive patients is high. They have that ability. Now, to answer your second question, though, on the graph. So the state has provided us some graphing tools that they have sanctioned, and they've given us some parameters to deal with. And there are some variability in that graphing. And it's, a lot of it is dependent upon our social distancing work. Right now, the state says that we can use a range of somewhere between 30 and 70% social distancing. We mentioned this at our last briefing to your board. We're tracking right now along a 40% social distancing. We can kind of reverse engineer the chart. At 40% hospitalization, the model still shows that we will exceed our ICU beds and our hospital beds by a significant amount. As it stands now, at 40%, we will see a peak in October, early October, where we will far exceed probably three times our hospital bed capacity and about four times our ICU capacity. That's at 40% using the model that they've given us. If we increase social distancing to 50%, meaning half of the time you take efforts to distance yourself, those numbers become manageable. And in fact, they stay within the limits of the hospital as it stands today. We just about maximize our ICU beds, but we stay well below our total bed count needed. So even that 10% dramatically changes our ability. And in that scenario, the ACS is not needed. At the 40%, it is needed significantly. And in fact, it will exceed the capability of the ACS.
Okay, so basically, how well people follow the social distancing guidelines dictates whether or not we're going to need this or not? Is essentially what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
And so you think that we, so your recommendation is we move forward on this in the event that we do need it? And hopefully, if people keep doing what they're doing and do it well, then we're not going to get there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Scrivener, are you done? Okay, thank you. Supervisor Gleason, and then Supervisor Maggert.
Thank you. It was a good line of questioning. So if, so I don't, I'm not sure I trust the data that we're modeling. I just don't know that it's proven itself of value or how much value it is. I think it's significantly off in some ways. In some ways, I think we have achieved that psychology, that social psychology to improve our social distancing. I see it every day when I meet with people. I think everybody's getting on board. Okay, and if it's common that through the hospitals, the 10 or 11, 10 hospitals we have?
Yes, sir.
That we are at 60% or lower?
Yes.
When you say lower, what do you mean? You mean 40%, 50%, 20%?
Probably in the 50% range. I'm averaging, but it varies.
You're guessing, I understand that. And we have to 140%, anything exceeding 140%, then it triggers our use of this facility. And you're suggesting that it may not happen until October?
Yes, sir.
It may not happen?
Right.
So why don't we wait until September to do this vice now? What, I guess the better question is this. What is the appropriate trigger for us to use to commit that significant amount of cash, money to provide this facility?
I think it is wise to make those decisions today based on the information that we have today. This is an insurance plan because we're talking about lives. If, in fact, we wait until September and the peak happens in October, we may not be ready, we will not be ready, for that peak to occur. We need to be prepared now. We need to minimize the costs we can and maximize the reimbursement. But I need that stuff staged, and I need to be ready to go if needed. If the hospitals are trending, and we watch them daily, where they are exceeding their resources, we will have notice. We will likely have weeks of notice. And we can then start to operationalize that ACS. But it needs to be there in case we need it. Because if it exceeds their maximum capability, these are individuals that need care that will not get it.
So, thank you, good answer. I'm not sure I buy it, but good answer. And I'm not being rude, I'm not being rude at all. And I don't mean to be mean, and I don't mean to be careless in my thought, but we have three deaths in Kern County. Has the mortality rate in Kern County changed at all in the past three, four months? The overall mortality rate of Kern County, do you have any idea? I probably should have called you because I knew I was going to ask you this question, but I should have called you to give you time to prepare.
So I'm going to defer to Kim Hernandez. She has the real data here. She's shaking her head at me. But we have limited number of deaths, of course, but we track, and we have limited amount of data. And so you're recognizing some of the limitations that we have. We're using state modeling with state variables, and it is a model. And we're actually plotting the actual data on it. But it's only for a couple of weeks that we have actual data. So we are trending with what the model shows. But there is significant variability in those models. And I agree and think you should be suspicious of the model because it is not perfect. However, we have seen other communities that have struggled with providing medical care to individuals. We don't want to be in that position. This is an investment in the community, and I think it's a small investment to make because of the potential, and hopefully unlikely, catastrophic events that could happen if we don't.
Mick, I want to say something, if you don't mind.
Please do.
Thank you, in response to your question. So, Mr. Constantine, it would appear to me, not just from the doctors I talk to sometimes on an hourly basis here in town who I trust with my life and the care of this community, and the constituents who I hear from, who in my district are mostly poor, mostly, you know, not as engaged in the healthcare apparatus in the way that some others are, if you will. And so if it is the case that people in my district, for a whole host of reasons, and I would assume other parts of this county, are not being tested because, one, the tests are unavailable, there's confusion, there's profiteering and every kind of, you know, pathetic human behavior we see going on right now, exploiting the situation, that a number of people will not be tested, that a number of people are not tested. I think we're grossly undertesting, frankly. I think we need a very aggressive testing and isolation model if we're ever going to get back to real normalcy. Although I think we need to get there as fast as we can, and the economic concerns are profound. But if it is true that my district, for example, is not being tested, being undertested, and they are, you know, dying from complications that are combined with and have a cumulative impact through COVID, but they aren't tested and they're not being tested, and they're not going to be tested death, then those deaths would not be counted towards COVID. Is that correct? And do we have any reason to believe that's a problem? I've read about this going on in other parts around the country, that the lack of testing and the sort of nature of access to healthcare and all of its complexity, socioeconomic and otherwise, has created this kind of dynamic. And I don't want to go down some conspiracy line theory. I just, to Mick's point about, something's off on our numbers. I mean, I am concerned. I'm not an expert, and I won't pretend to tell you how to do your job. But I think that Mick is pointing to something that is of real concern to me. And if you have any expertise now, please speak to it. If not, I know it's complicated and things are changing daily. But I would like to really know more about that because I do think we're undertesting. And I'd like to, and I think people also have a sense of insecurity and doubt and fear about who's coming and going, you know? It's pretty, it's just not good.
So Supervisor Perez, you're correct. If you're not tested and diagnosed, we don't count you. So that's obviously true. There is no testing supply shortage in the county. Again, we check in with all the hospitals and testers now. So we have a good supply.
Matt, the issue is people who are not inclined to go to get tested because they either are poor, afraid, immigration issues, people picking our food and feeding us. I mean, this is really problematic because they're not coming in. They're not okay with the system because it's scary some way. You know, not that that's your fault. It's not my fault either. It's the nature of what's going on right now. So I just wonder how that's manipulating our numbers, that's all. And if it isn't, then it isn't, Matt. I think you're... I think you're doing a great job. And I'm, we're all trying to wrap our heads around it, and I think Mick raises some very interesting points. That's all.
I understand your point, and it would apply to any sort of infectious disease or healthcare services that we provide. We're challenged with the same limitations.
No question.
Yes, ma'am.
I hear you. Thank you, Mr. Constantine. Mick, back to you.
Thanks. How much did you say this is going to cost us per day or per month or per week?
So it's variable depending on how many patients.
Right.
And it's an estimate at this point. But we're estimating at 100 patients per month would be about 1.75 million.
And that, how much does it cost in our general fund? 49, 47?
Yeah, about $50,000, 47, 48 was I think the estimate that I provided.
A day? Oh, that's a month?
Correct, that's for a month.
And we're going to get the, recoup these FEMA dollars and state dollars and CDBG dollars regardless of how many people, oh, no, that is based on a population.
So that's estimating a population of 100. You know, the budget, if you...
Got it.
Yeah, so the budget, if we flip back a couple of slides, you can see, you know, is about $1,900,000 at 40 patients roughly, but the same proportionate estimated cost sharing would be applied. So I can tell, let me just say, on the financial side of this, I respect and understand it's a lot of taxpayer money regardless of where that money's coming from, whether it's state dollars or federal dollars or local dollars. And we're doing everything we can at the, planning for this ACS to do so in a responsible way where we're not going out and committing funding that doesn't need to be committed. There are certain assets or supplies that may be in short supply that, that, that our team feels like these need to be in place and secured now or we won't have them if we have to be, go, go live. Those are being, being purchased and moved, moved on. But other than that, we're taking a conservative approach in not going out and spending a lot of money unnecessarily.
Got it. Thank you very much, Jim. What's the exit plan? Let's, let's say we do this, and let's say that, you know, we never, the hospitals never reach 140%.
Yep.
And so this has been a great exercise in demonstrating our commitment to our constituents in Kern County and like that, but a futile waste of money. When are we going to make the decision to cut, cut bait and fish?
So we're looking at that constantly, and we're, we're meeting on it. Every other day, our, our planning team is getting together and talking about this. A large part depends on the modeling. As our experience grows, that modeling gets better, we get better understanding of what we can expect. You know, I defer to public health at the point that they say, hey, we don't see this in the forecast that this is going to be needed. Then, then we'll go ahead and, and remove our assets from the fair site and make the decision on whether we resale those or we retain them for other types of emergency use and, and put it in stockpilot in that way. It just depends on what those assets are. But we can certainly cut back, you know, as soon as we get the green light from, from public health.
And we can stagger our way back based on however it shapes up.
Yes, sir.
Last question, and then I'll pass it on. We've gotten, we've gotten in trouble as a county before relying on IGTs, intergovernmental transfers. Our Kern medical was a mess because of the lagging timeframe, and I'm seeing IGTs in this thing, all over the, red flags for me. Are there red flags for you, and are we prepared to deal with those IGT lag?
So from the IGTs, are you referring to the city and...
FEMA. No, I'm talking about the FEMA and the CALOES dollars.
So, so that's an estimate, and, and there's other funding streams coming forward. The Corona Relief Fund, one of the largest pools of money being made available at the federal level and pushed out to the states and to the counties with over $500,000 in population. We're in line for that funding, and that is aimed to directly reimburse direct and indirect costs for COVID-related expenditures. That's what this is. So if it's not FEMA reimbursable, and FEMA can be picky over, over the supporting documentation and the types of costs are covered, you know, there are other avenues here with this federal stimulus money in order to cover these costs. So I'm hopeful that we can get to a zero net general fund impact from this operation. I get concerned with reimbursements as well, so that's always something we have to manage. And, but, but our team is on it, and we're, we're looking at all of the state and federal programs available to fund these things.
Thanks. Good presentation.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor Gleason, Supervisor Maggert.
Thank you. First, with regard to death rates, could you inquire and bring to us this afternoon a year-over-year, month-over-month comparison of January, February, March, April of 2020 to 2019 as to how many people have expired in Kern County during those months? We, isn't that a function that we would know through the Health Department?
Supervisor Maggert, from COVID-19?
No, overall death rates for all of Kern County by month for 2019 versus 2020 on a month-by-month basis, and then the total for the year so far.
Yes, sir.
That would give us a sense of whether or not there is this unreported, under-the-radar increase in, in death occurring. So I appreciate if you can bring that back to us this afternoon, if you could. Next, with regard to the facility that Mr. Servis, that we're putting together, how recent are the photographs that you showed us in this PowerPoint?
Some of them were two days ago, and some of them were a week ago.
Okay, so it alarms me, and I'm not criticizing what we're doing, but it alarms me that, you know, I want to, much, a great deal of infrastructure has to go into place, all the little tubes that take oxygen to a bed, the, the kind of wiring that allows telemetry to be set up in each, each different room, a myriad of, of wires and hoses and tubes and pipes have to be in there. So it, will this replicate that on this site? And if so, when will those things be ready to go? Because that takes a great deal of time to put that together.
Yeah, so I'm going to defer to our public health. Maybe George Baker is, is, he's the, the lead on the, the operational end of the ACS, so I'm going to defer to, to Mr. Baker.
Thank you. Mr. Baker, good morning.
Good morning. Supervisor Maggert, through the chair, we, we have a lot of the infrastructure ready. We are confident that the team we have in place can build this within 48 hours when we're given the order to do so. As far as the oxygen specifically, we have many oxygen cylinders and oxygen concentrators that are being delivered to us currently. Each bed that we have assigned within the facility will have the ability to have its own oxygen source. We have light towers that we are having a standby for lighting outside. We have the lighting inside. We already have most of the power sorted out. As you'll see in one of the pictures, there are spider boxes already laid out that drop down from the ceiling that allow us to provide power. We have the heart monitors already on site that we need, as well as pulse oximetry to measure the oxygen level in the bloodstream. We have, we're, we're pretty well set up. As soon as we get the, the notification from the Director of Public Health, we can have this ready to go.
It's been a few years since I've spent a long time in hospitals and ICUs, but as I recollect, there are several levels of care. ICU, there was another one, I can't remember the name of it, but it was one step down from ICU, but was before you were on the telemetry floor. Then there's telemetry, then there's a regular floor. So there's several levels of care that are rendered there. Which of those levels, to what, what's the highest level of care that can be delivered at the site we're talking about at our ACS?
We are taking what we are terming subacute patients, those that still require some level of continued care or isolation, but do not require intensive care. We will have no ventilators. We will have the capacity to provide oxygen and breathing treatments to those that require, but we will not be taking critically ill patients. We will not be taking any patients from the street. They will have to be referred from a hospital.
So, that's an interesting issue. You know, there's a, hospitals are compelled to take any walk-up patient that, that comes. If somebody walks up and they've been gunshot down the street and they, they walk up to the site, are we going to put them in an ambulance and take them somewhere else?
Correct. We will provide initial stabilization care, put them in an ambulance, get them doing a acute care facility.
Okay. So, will this be a COVID-free site? If we're not going to have ventilators, will we not have any COVID patients at this facility?
These will be all COVID-positive patients that are no longer at the stage of care that they require ventilator. These are patients that have been stabilized, weaned off of ventilator, but still require isolation or some level of care. But we will, and if, if we have a patient that destabilizes, we will transfer them back to an acute care.
Very good, thank you. With regard to the homeless population, how do we, do we know whether or not any home, Mr. Baker, right?
Yes, sir.
I don't think I have any more questions for you, so I don't want you to make you stand there. But don't, don't go home yet.
Okay. We'll stick around.
Okay, thank you. With regard to the homeless, are we aware whether or not there has been any homeless person that we know is in the, in the queue now being treated for COVID exposure or COVID symptoms?
Supervisor Maggert, I will answer the reverse of that question. The temporary isolation units remain available to be used, and I think there's even some interest as of today where they're looking at potential patients that could transfer into there. But just in general, there's likely those that are homeless that have been affected.
What, what I'm curious about is whether or not the homeless lifestyle is insulating those people that are homeless from being infected because they're not in the general population? And are they isolated to such an extent that the disease is not infecting them? Do we have any sense of that?
It's an interesting dynamic that we face locally here. The governor had initially been interested in breaking apart encampments, homeless encampments because of their concern where people with suppressed immune systems and lack of healthcare living really close to each other could present the, the opportunity for transmission. In Kern County, that's not usually the case that we see. And in fact, you're stating what we believe is the case, that in fact, there may be greater social distancing occurring in how our homeless are here. So we've not actively tried to go after and break up encampments because of COVID, but you present an interesting question that I don't have a full answer for, but it may be a part of it.
Wouldn't that be interesting if that, if the lifestyle leads itself to that? Speaking of data and how we reveal it, I guess I want to digress for a second. I'm not sure if we're going to come back to it, but when Matt initiated the conversation about the, the conversation that was had with the statistician and whether or not we can expand the level of revelations that we're making, the level of detail, I, I want to thank my board members, my colleagues, for their interest in directing staff to pursue what alternatives we have to be, to reveal more information, not less information. And I want to point out to the public, the, the Public Health Department is revealing no less or no more than they have been told to release by this Board of Supervisors. You are following the direction that you receive from the state, and we have not told you heretofore to do otherwise. We are now engaging you in conversation to explore specifically what is a pathway so that we can reveal more information. And I'm very gratified that this statistician appears to, to, to be willing to, to follow this other model that is there so that we'll be able to give a much greater detail. There is a report out from the California Department of Public Health that identifies by name and community the, facility names that are called SNFs, skilled nursing facilities. And if the facility has greater than 11 exposures, it lists the number of exposures of staff and/or, two categories, one is staff and one is patients. Certainly, if the State of California Department of Public Health is revealing that, for example, in the Anaheim Healthcare Center in Orange County has 15 patients, somebody knows the address of that facility. If they're saying that the Briar Oak on Sunset in Los Angeles has 62 staff and 80 patients who are COVID-positive, I could go on with a long list of who, who these are. If the California Department of Public Health is revealing to the entire world that at this address on this street, there are this many staff and this many patients that have it, there is a way for us to reveal to our community by municipality and maybe even more so by zip code or something like that, how to go about doing that. So when do we think we'll have the ability to make that level of detail more available to the public?
I'm going to defer to Margot to perhaps provide a little overview of the current contractual arrangement, but then shortly after that agreement has been reached, we can work on the data and get that information out. It's our top priority.
Supervisor Maggert, through the, through the chair, the agreement is with the statistician as we speak.
So...
It was reviewed back and forth yesterday. I believe the final, the final version that the parties have agreed to is now to him for signature.
And the, the payment for that doesn't require specific action by the board? It's less than the threshold that requires, is that right?
It is.
Okay, so I, Madam Clerk, are we scheduled not to meet again publicly for two weeks?
That is correct. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May 5.
Thank you. So are there any policy decisions this board needs to make that are in the way of, once the statistician gives us the pathway of how we can deliver this information, is there anything we need to decide that will slow down the process of making these revelations to the public?
No, sir.
So we're good to go?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Servis, thank you for your information and your diligence on our behalf, on the behalf of all the people of Kern County.
You're welcome, thank you.
Supervisor Maggert, are you done? Thank you. I have a question, Mr. Constantine. I've heard some rumors that there's a belief that coronavirus may have been here for some time. I know we don't have all the science worked out. Do you have a statement about that? And could you tell us when you think this may have appeared in Kern County?
So I'm going to ask Kim Hernandez if she can come up and provide any insight that she may have.
I appreciate that. Ryan, are you plugged in to be next? And then I know we need to hear from our Planning Director, Laura Lioviatt.
Madam Chair, as you mentioned, the science behind where the novel coronavirus started and whether or not it was here in the United States in Kern County prior to when we were first able to test for it remains unknown. Obviously, it was first identified and named at the end of 2019, so...
In Kern County?
No, no, in, in, in the world.
Okay.
Right, it was first identified in China. It was named by the World Health Organization. And so, you know, we, they had to develop the test to detect it. So we don't know where it was prior to it being detectable and found in our community. So we can't give a good answer to that, unfortunately. We have heard, you know, the rumors and the thoughts, but the, the science that we know about is what we have been able to determine with the current testing mechanisms.
So the conventional wisdom would say December 19th was the earliest time that it could have come to Kern, just based on the other things that we've seen? Layman's perspective, of course, layman's conventional wisdom. So whether or not it had been here for some time before that is totally possible, it sounds like from what you're saying.
It's difficult for us to know. They have been doing extensive genetic analysis of the virus to try to see where, how it relates to others, and if they can completely identify, you know, when it first originated is unknown. We know that it is related to the other, the other novel coronaviruses in some fashion, but they, they don't have a exact timeline or an exact lineage for it at this time.
What's the date that you'd say we first knew about it in Kern County? When did we have first official testing or some, some official formality that it was now in Kern County?
The first case we had was reported to us on March 17th. The earliest specimen collection date that you can see on our website is March 13th. And so we knew a patient at that time was assessed by a healthcare provider, they collected the specimen for testing, and then that patient eventually resulted in a positive test.
That first patient? Do we know if that patient is now deceased?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. My guess would be no, because our, most, our earlier patients, we didn't have a death until much later.
Okay, thank you. That is very helpful. Any other questions at this time? No? Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Maggert has a question for you, Doctor? I'm sorry.
Thank you, I apologize that I, it's not, not for, not for Ms. Hernandez. With regard to supplies, as, if this ramps up, there was some concern for a while that, you know, we didn't have enough masks, and then we didn't have enough gowns, and how are we doing with regard to the supply issue now?
Personal protective equipment, Supervisor Maggert, through the chair, remains one of our primary duties. We do have supplies. It ebbs and flows quite a bit. I think today we're expecting another delivery from the state. We, and in fact, myself, I've spoken to all of the CEOs to assess their level of PPE. For the most part, they have been able to purchase PPE through vendors, either their existing vendors or new vendors. There's been a lot of news recently about receiving, hospitals receiving donations, both monetary and PPE directly. As it stands today, we are okay. We're tracking well. If our numbers ramp up significantly, that will become more of an issue. But as it stands today, we are okay.
So when we talk about whether or not we come to a point that we... So when we talk about whether or not we come to a point that we might enable hospitals to begin, once again, doing elective procedures and help them with their revenue stream and keeping their staff employed, the consequence of those procedures to the supply chain will be an important question. So we don't have a, we don't have an answer now, but I want us to make sure that's part of the conversation as we go forward. I'm sure it will be.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Maggard. Excuse me. Director Oviad, if you could make your way over. Mr. Alsop, do you want to comment prior to Director Oviad or after? You would know best.
I would be happy to go after Madam Chairwoman, if that's okay.
Thank you, Ryan. Director Oviad.
Good afternoon. This is item actually 57. Two weeks ago, we were notified that through the CARE Act, the Community Block Grant Program has set aside additional specific COVID-19 money. So this does not, this is not your normal CBDG funds, but a specific allocation. Kern County received this allocation. The City of Bakersfield received a separate allocation. This money is for the, this money is for us to use for preparation and anything else that we had to do for COVID-19. In conversations with the CAO, they've identified that they would like to use this particular money for the staffing that are not reimbursable from other things for the ACS. It is not set aside for that, which means that because restrictions have been lifted on what we can use this CBDG money for, it is possible that the general fund cost, back to March, for many of the staffers that have been working on COVID-19 that can't be reimbursed from others, could be reimbursed from this funding. And we will be working, which is why we're recommending that your board take this action today. It is not, it may be right now being earmarked for the ACS, but we are going to be working with the CAO to sweep through any other funding that's, sorry, any other staffing that can't be reimbursed from somewhere else. CBDG money comes instantly. We actually have access to what's called IDIS. We get an invoice. My staff downloads it. The federal money is put into the county bank account. So there is no reimbursement, as you have with CalOES and delays that you may have with FEMA. So to answer Supervisor Gleason's question through the chair. So I did want to touch on some of the limitations that have been lifted. For example, we just found out about this allocation two weeks ago. We were able to bring this item to your board because they shortened the 30-day public comment period to five days. They have lifted the normal cap on how much we can spend for a public services reimbursement. There is no cap. They have also, thank heavens, said that we can go retroactively back, since the CARE Act was passed on April 6th, and we have been dealing with COVID-19 since March, we can actually go back and take things before Congress took action and have those be reimbursed. We are not recommending that this money be used right now for things like building things or otherwise doing that, because there is still that NEPA part of that, and this is supposed to be emergency money. Let's use the money in an urgent fashion. The recommendation on, for your board's decision includes language that identifies this was an urgent situation. It was not predicted by your board. It is our most vulnerable people, homeless, low-income, disabled, our elderly. These are all the people that are most, that our planning is most impacting, since if you have access to healthcare, you know, you have a doctor you can go to and can get the kinds of resources. I'd like to point out that the total amount was $2,925,667. Of that, $419,833 of that is being allocated to our cooperative cities. California City, Ridgecrest, Shafter, Tatchpe, and Wasco are all cooperative cities through CBDG. We have sent their amounts that they have been allocated. We sent those to the city managers yesterday. We will be working with them proactively to make sure that they use this money. Obviously, the budget for these cities is in as dire shape as possibly the county, and so we think this is money that we are recommending they use to reimburse for the kinds of staffing, for their law enforcement, even things such as, you know, extra cleaning crews and other sorts of things that they've had to do for COVID-19. There is an addition, an additional one point, sorry, $1,446,317 in ESG money. That will come before your board later, where we will be, we are working with the Homeless Collaborative and the CAO's office to look to see what additional providers, such as Flood Ministries, CityServe, and others, need for COVID-19. As you heard from Mr. Zerfus, there is a lot of money. Some of it needs a match, some of it doesn't. And so while this is all taxpayers' money, we are trying to minimize the impact on the general fund, since this was not a planned event. That completes my, that completes my update for your board. I would note that there are cities that are not cooperative cities, unfortunately, and don't participate in our program. They would not be eligible for this money, and they will have to go to the state and work their way through the state process of the state's allocation for, if there is an allocation, for COVID-19. The recommendation is quite long, and I won't read it, but I would recommend that whatever decision you make on the ACS, I do recommend that you do make the findings and approve this for item 57, because this money is available for many other reimbursements. And I'm available for questions.
Director Oviad, thank you. Supervisor Maggard is that now, or was that previous? Sorry about that. And then, okay, great. If you could have a seat, Director Oviad. I know our CAO has some comments, and then we're going to take each matter independently. So, Ryan?
Hey, Madam Chairwoman. I appreciate the opportunity to just say a few words. I don't want to prolong this. Thank you in advance for your support of these two items. We are, turns out, we're very good at building things, particularly important things, in a shortened timeframe, whether that's a homeless navigation center or an isolation center out at the fairgrounds for homeless individuals, or an ACS. The cooperation among York County leaders, the cooperation with the City of Bakersfield has been very good in all areas, and I just want to take the opportunity to let you know that I'm very thankful of the leadership of Mr. Zerfus in my office, along with the leadership of our Public Health Department, our Public Health Director, Mr. Constantine and his staff, along with the entire team that has been meeting on a daily basis for weeks to stand this facility up. This is all in the name of preparation, and Lorelei said it best, this is at all costs or in every way possible, trying to mitigate the financial impact on the county's general fund. The federal and state governments have acted specifically to provide funding for these types of actions that we're taking, and we're taking advantage of that. And our hope is that we don't have to open it up. The expenditure for the county's general fund, the hit, is a little less than $50,000 a month, standing it up. We don't have, we hope we don't have to take that next step, which is directly tied to capacity issues with this virus at area hospitals. That will be a step that will be determined and, you know, an action determined by our Public Health Director at a time in the future, but we hope we don't have to get there. And with that, I just, again, thank you very much for everything, and I appreciate your support of this item, these two items.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Alsop. I am going to take public comment on both of these items, so, excuse me, in reference to item 39 and 57. 39, of course, being the report on the county's response to the COVID-19 emergency. Thank you, Mr. Constantine, and your team, for the report on that. Item 57 is regarding the report you just heard from Director Oviad. It's a public hearing, or it was and is, a public hearing for proposed amendment to the County of Kern, 2015-2020 Consolidated Plan of Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan for Community Development Program Response to Coronavirus COVID-19 Pandemic. So you've heard reports on both 39 and 57. I'd like to open it to the public for comment. Ms. Kraus, do we have any?
Madam Chair, we do not have any public comment.
Thank you for that. I'll close the public hearing and return to the board for comment, questions, or action. And do we need to take these items separately?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. As to item 50, or, excuse me, 39, colleagues?
Motion to approve item number 39 and authorize the auditor control to process the specified budgetary adjustments and accounting transactions.
Thank you, Mike.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Oh, excuse me. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Gleason?
Aye.
Supervisor Scrivner?
Aye.
Supervisor Maggard?
Aye.
Supervisor Couch?
Aye.
Supervisor Perez?
Aye. Thank you. Okay, as to item 57, as to the report we just received from Ms. Oviad, thank you for your hard work and being on top of this. To know that your mind is managing these complex funding streams gives me a lot of comfort. So thank you. As to item 57, we've already opened and closed public comment, so now we will return back to the board for comment and action.
Motion on staff's recommendation?
Second.
Supervisor Gleason?
Aye.
Supervisor Scrivner?
Aye.
Supervisor Maggard?
Aye.
Supervisor Couch?
Aye.
Supervisor Perez?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you so very much. Okay, well, that brings us to the end. Thank you all for your patience for a rather daunting morning. We do have one more item, and that is the need to consider adding a closed-session item before adjourning to closed session. This is a non-agenda item as it stands now. It's a motion to consider a closed-session item, number 74, make finding that the need to take action on a non-agenda matter occurred after the agenda was posted on April 16, 2020. County officials learned of significant information, and such information warrants immediate consideration by the board. County Council, item number 62, is a conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation. Ms. Raison, do you have something to add?
Just ask that...
Show mic on.
Apologize. I would just ask that it be approved to be placed on closed session.
So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Gleason. We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Supervisor Gleason?
Aye.
Supervisor Scrivner?
Aye.
Supervisor Maggard?
Here. I mean, aye.
Supervisor Couch?
Aye.
And Supervisor Perez?
Here. We have two, two, three. Not bad. Okay, very good. So we are going to adjourn to closed session, entertain a motion to move to closed session, and we'll be back at 2:00.
So moved.
Thank you, Zach. Adjourn.